So, good evening. And I have the pleasure of calling the Southboro Public School Committee a quarter. And today is Wednesday, May 11th, 2022. And the first quarter of business is election of officers. So, asking the committee if there is a nomination for chairperson of the Southboro School Committee for the upcoming year.
I'd like to meet Roger Challen.
Second.
So, we have a nomination, Roger Challen, and a second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to make the comment that I think that Roger has done an amazing job the last two years being the chair of this committee. He's responsive, respectful, organized, you know, everything, everything you might want. And he's put in so much time. And I think we all appreciate that it's a big job and it does take a lot. And if he's willing to do it and we can prevail upon him for a third year to do it, I think we'd all...well, I'll speak for myself. I would be grateful.
Ditto.
People promised me this would be an easier year. Hopefully, as far as COVID is concerned...
Any other comments?
Discussion? Can I say something? Yeah, I'll just say too that I think Roger has navigated the role very well in terms of myself and us as committee members. There's a lot that he has to kind of communicate to us and share with us and vice versa, that he serves as the kind of contact point in the funnel for information both sent to the committee as well as our information that we want to have seen on agendas and training, et cetera, that we want. So, you know, it may not be perceived by every single individual in the community that they are getting an individual response at times. But I just think that you've done a really great job at helping to make sure that all of our voices are heard and incorporated. When we disagree, that's okay too. And you've been open for feedback. And so, I think that those are some of the attributes that, you know, would really be helpful to continue. And so, I second...I agree with the nomination and the second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Challen, do you accept the nomination?
I do. Appreciate the comments and I accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
So approved. I will hand back the gavel to Mr. Challen.
Thank you. So, we have two other officers to elect. We have Vice Chair and Secretary. And I'm open for nominations for Vice Chair. Well, I'm gonna jump in. I'm gonna nominate Kamali Omeley for Vice Chair.
Second.
As you know, it's an important position and that, you know, Chair's not available. It falls to the Vice Chair to jump in. And the last couple of years where we had a lot of online meetings, it was a little easier for folks to attend all those meetings. But back to in-person meetings, I think it's gonna be more challenging. So, any discussion about regarding Kamali? All right, ready to vote? All in favor? Well, let me just...are you willing to accept the position?
I accept the position, yes.
Sometimes for other positions, we don't even wait till somebody accepts it. You vote very quickly. All in favor? All right. Next, we've got Position for Secretary. Congratulations.
Hello, Nathan.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Are there any discussion on this before I ask him if she's willing to accept?
I'll just say like, you know, because the community can't see what happens behind the scenes, but you've been really great at capturing the information that we, you know, have to sometimes, you know, sign off on or, you know, also kind of summarizing for us, you know, the points that have been told. And so, I think in that capacity, you'd be great.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of Kim? Opposed? Carries. So, we also need to elect the Superintendent as a Union Member. By, I guess historically, and maybe it's more than just historically, it's the...I was gonna say the three oldest members, but I kind of fit that category no matter how you define it. So, let's be specific. It's normally the three members that have served the longest on the committee. And if we follow that, then that would be myself, Katara and Jen. That would kind of spread out, spread out the officers amongst everyone. I think we need to nominate and vote these officers. Is that...
So, you need to nominate the officers and then at the combined meeting, the Superintendency Union meeting, we'll elect the roles.
The three people from this committee are simply going to be members and, as I say, as the superintendent said, combined meeting, then it's determined who the officers are. So, let's see. I guess I'll nominate Katara Martin for the Superintendent, as a Superintendent as a Union Member. Is there a second? Any discussion? Katara, are you willing to accept this?
Yes.
All in favor? Opposed? All right. I'll also nominate Jen Crimick as a Superintendent Union Member. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was first?
Katara was first.
Katara was seconded by Katara. Any discussion? Jen, are you willing to accept that? As a Union Member. Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Carries? Someone will have to come in and...
I nominate Roger Challen for the Superintendent...how do I say it though?
Superintendency Union.
Superintendency Union.
Number three.
Number three.
Second.
I'm willing to do that. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All right. So, the elections are over. I think the first...well, the first item we need to attend to is to open a public hearing for the school choice. And so...
Yes, literally.
Sorry? I didn't hear. Are we okay?
Yes.
All right. So, do we need to...do I need to actually call that to order? Okay. So, I'm gonna basically call to order the public hearing for school choice, which is on the half of 6:40? At 6:40 PM. And certainly, are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this? Now, we'll give a short summary of what we're gonna do on this. All right. So, seeing none, I think this is an agenda item. And I'm gonna close this hearing. And I think this is an agenda item that we're gonna take up when we get to it in the agenda.
Correct.
So, I'm gonna declare that the public hearing on school choice is closed at 6:41. Next item is public comment. Opening up. Anyone here tonight like to comment for the school committee? There's another one at the end of the meeting. All right. Hearing that, why don't we move to new business? And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Martin.
So, far more exciting than elections and school choice, Principal's Report. So, this evening, I think, why don't we start with Principal Mucci in here from Woodward School? Because I believe we have some special guests in the audience, distinguished guests in the audience. So, Principal Mucci.
So, I'll share my updates from Woodward. And then I will introduce our two wonderful guests here. If you can come on and join me now. So, with May 8th through 14th being Food Allergy Awareness Week, and promote food allergy awareness among our students, we had a guest presenter, Kyle Dine, perform virtually for our school. That occurred on Monday. Kyle is a keynote speaker, musician and performer, and also the founder and CEO of People Eats. He uses songs, stories and puppets to share the message of food allergy awareness with students and adults. Special thanks to Amy Benford, who is our ITS at Woodward, and the Keep Smiling for Abbey Foundation for sponsoring the presentation. Massachusetts Walk to School...excuse me, Massachusetts Walk, Bike and Roll to School Day was recognized at Woodward this morning with over 30 students joining teachers, staff and parents. This event was moved from the original date last week due to weather. It was a great way to start the day. I'm proud to share that Woodward School will also be recognized at the Massachusetts Safe Roots to School Award Ceremony on Friday, June 3rd, for its participation and recognition into this program. That happens annually and we've been lucky enough to be part of that award ceremony pretty much every year. Last Friday, staff and students wore green to bring attention to Mental Health Awareness Month, which recognizes...which was recognized in May. This was a coordinated effort with Southboro Community Services. What the tech is that week begins on May 24th. And I said tech, students explore technology of the past and learn about its uses and functions and explore how it has led to developments in modern technology. So, think of like rotary phones, keepers, pagers, Polaroid film cameras, eight-tracks, cassettes. Students kind of explore all those pieces of technology and make the connection with our current technology in ways that we use technology to improve all of our lives. So, that's happening on May 24th. This year, for Field Day, and I know I'm shooting ahead a little bit, but we're just really excited to announce it, will...our Field Day will be on June 3rd and will be expanded beyond just sports and games. This year, we're planning for a day of fun outside with a portion of the day being used for team building and individual games and challenges, and then the other half being used for community partnerships. So, we'll be welcoming guests from Harvard University in the Think First Injury Prevention Program. They'll share information, strategies for vehicle and bus safety, bicycle and pedestrian safety, playground safety, water safety and violence prevention. We also will be having Kim Ivors from the Southboro Public Library join us to launch the summer reading program. Southboro Fire Department will also be joining us to discuss summer safety and may even be bringing a vehicle along for students to explore. I'm thinking touch-of-truck style, but we obviously need to confirm that with Southboro Fire Department. We don't wanna take their equipment away. And then finally, we'll be...we're actually finalizing plans for student-created art installation that will be hung in the building as a way for kids to leave their mark on Woodward. So, all those things will be happening on our Field Day. This year, thanks to SOS and Woodward Community Fundraising, all students and staff will receive the official 2022 limited edition Woodward Field Day T-shirt. The T-shirt features a design that was selected by students through a design contest. Grade three students will be getting a visit from Eyes on Owls on June 8th. Students...excuse me, Eyes on Owls introduces students to owls of New England, where they learn about markings, calls, habitat, diet and owl behavior, and even ways to identify owls in nature. And lastly, well, second to last, I'm very excited to announce that we'll be launching Destination Imagination at Woodward for the 2223 school year. Raulca Mandrilla, a Woodward parent, has volunteered to lead the charge and create parent and student surveys to gauge interest. From there, we'll be pursuing a non-competitive team to participate in the official challenge next year. And then the hope would be to expand this into a competitive team once we get our feet wet and once we gauge interest around the community. They do have multiple programs at different levels, so the hope is that we could try it at Woodward and any other school that would be interested and then potentially extend it down there. And lastly, most importantly, I have April Gibson and Simona Pete here, who are two Woodward students from Ms. Robeson's class, who's very shy and she's holding a poster for the blue-spotted salamanders. And I wanted to introduce April and Simona so that they could share all the work that they've been doing to recognize the blue-spotted salamander in Massachusetts.
Hello. Thank you for inviting us to present to the school committee. Our names are Simona Pete and April Gibson. We wanted to share a cool project that we have been working on. Here's how it all started for Simona and her family. I really love salamanders because since I was five, I've been helping my family look for salamanders to try to help them cross roads so they don't get hit by cars as they try to get to vernal pools to lay their eggs. On March, me and my brother are excited. And mom is checking the weather to see if there will be a night when it is raining and the temperature is above 41 degrees. When that night comes, me and my brother bundle up in raincoats and the whole family drives to the wetlands in town. We walk up and down the roads with flashlights, looking for salamanders to help them cross. It fills me with joy and excitement when I see salamanders or when I can help them. At the end of last school year, me and my mom looked up to see if we had a state amphibian and we found out we don't, but 27 other states do. After thinking about different species, I decided the blue-spotted salamander would make a good state amphibian because it is safe run and needs help. Also, any attention it gets would be helpful for other salamanders and animals that live in vernal pools. What has happened recently? Since we found out the Andover animal advocates from Andover High School who are working on the same project, we joined forces with them to get support for the bill. I was able to meet Representative Dykema and Senator Eldridge and ask them to co-sponsor the bill. I've talked to my school classmates, Club Scout Pack and Sunday School, asking kids to make drawings of support...like this one. I presented to the Southboro Conservation Commission and the Mystic River and Orsway Set Associations. I've also presented to Joint Committee on State Administration and Regulatory Oversight. Through emails, we have also gotten support from the Vernal Pool Association, Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners and other organizations. There was a vote and unfortunately, it did not pass this time. I was tempted to study. We are optimistic for what is ahead. What will be happening in the future? The bill will be reintroduced again in January or February 2023. In the fall, we will be trying to contact schools all around the state and to ask their students to draw pictures and write letters. We asked that all the Southboro Elementary Schools and the high school get involved to draw pictures of blue-spotted salamanders and write letters, and also to spread the word about the bill to friends and family in different parts of the state. More information will be shared at a later date. Working on this project is a good lesson in science, this writing if kids write letters and how government works. Do you have any questions for us?
Well, hi, hi, girls. My name is Kamali Omeley and I just wanted to say that I could feel all the joy and excitement and I'm so glad that the blue-spotted salamander had you to help them. What is something that you learned about the government process that you would share and tell some of your classmates or friends about?
Well, I learned that it can take a really, really long time because I have been working on this project for a year and I have three more committees to go through and I'm still on my first.
Excellent observation. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say that was a fantastic presentation. You girls did really well. And I know it must be hard to kind of...you're used to it by now, but standing up and or sitting in front of folks and presenting your ideas. You did a great job. It was really beautifully written and good luck. I hope that...I hope you have success in the future.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say it was a great presentation. I was looking forward to this. You know, the reason I came tonight was for this presentation. But good luck with it.
Thank you.
Very nice.
And one last question for me. So, now that you know that we are your school committee leaders, what can we do to help you?
Well, what we want is just for kids to write letters and draw pictures of blue-spotted salamanders and asking the committee to let Alma pass it on to the next committee and to spread the word to other parts of the state so they realize not just one part of our state, Alma wants our state amphibian all over.
All set?
Good job.
If I could just add that, I believe Simona had started this project last year in Ms. Kelly's second grade class and has certainly received a lot of support from Ms. Kelly and Ms. Robeson and all staff at Woodward for their efforts. So, it's so encouraging. I know Kamali, you mentioned it at the last school committee meeting where you see like the work that students are, you know, practicing and the lessons that are taking place in school extend beyond just the curriculum and textbooks into real-world, you know, application. So, I just have to give all staff at Woodward kudos for that.
I'm curious about what Principal has to follow.
I think it's gonna be very big, Principal Ryan.
Well, I didn't bring anybody. That's really hard to follow. That was excellent. That was very well done, girls. I'd like to just start by echoing what Principal Mucci said around month of May being Mental Health Awareness Month. Kathy Wilson and Justin Barzahar, our care coordinators, have created a couple of videos to show the whole school highlighting what mental health is for our community, basically the way students think and feel about themselves and about their world. We truly believe that students are never too young to learn about how their feelings impact their lives. I'd also like to mention that today's National School Nurses Day and I'd like to recognize our school nurse, Trish Footman. Trish is one of the most dedicated caring people I know. Finn School appreciates her unyielding dedication and sound judgment and could not have managed so successfully during this pandemic without her. She is truly amazing. This past Monday, we also had a virtual whole-school assembly featuring Kyle Dine on allergy awareness sponsored by Amy Benford's Keep Smiling for Abbey Foundation. Students learned all about food allergies, how certain foods can affect the body and why it's very important, especially now in this communal dining opportunity that we have, for students not to be sharing any kind of food. Few academic updates. In preschool, students just finished a unit on planting and farming. And preschool students will be planting vegetables with the kindergarten and grade one students in the next couple of weeks. Also, preschool teachers are in the midst of trialing two new curriculum to replace our current Connect for Learning curriculum. One is Three Cheers. It's very similar to the Connect for Learning that we're currently using. And the other is a free curriculum developed by Boston Public Schools, which I mentioned is free, has a lot of modified curriculum pieces already in place that support our students with special needs and students who are English language others. Kindergarten, they're in the middle of a unit on the life cycle of butterflies and each classroom started with butterfly eggs. And students have been documenting the stage of each butterfly's life cycle. And at last check, most of the classrooms had active caterpillars. This is a big deal because sometimes the eggs don't hatch, but they were crawling around in their secured, contained habitats. Also, in kindergarten, students have finished up a unit on opinion writing and moved into a unit on persuasive writing and the power of persuasion. Students have been generating some very real persuasive themes like why they should have more recess and why pizza and ice cream should be lunch options every day at school. Did you hear that, Kate?
I did.
In grade one, students are learning about time, units of time, how to tell time on an analog clock, which is a little archaic in our technological world. Students are also working on the structured sequencing of the story. Few other updates. Today was our first Walk to School Wednesday and I'd like to thank Joan Provincial for kicking it off for us. If we didn't have 30 students or families, we'd hit about six. But we're growing. We're a small evolution. I'd also like to thank the parents of our incoming kindergarteners. As everybody knows, we postponed our case screening till the end of this month and I greatly appreciate parents' flexibility and understanding. Our screening is now scheduled for May 31st, June 1st and June 2nd. Sign-up information will be emailed out in the next couple of days. And finally, the Finn Schools preschool administrator, Jen Henry, has organized our first annual early childhood fair for a community building event. The goal is to create a family, community inclusive event that promotes community connections and offers opportunities for families and community providers to come together and learn about the resources that are available for families, for children, children who have infants to age five years of age. And the event will take place on Saturday, June 4th at the Finn School from 10 to 12. And that's our update of Finn School. No. No poster or anything.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next Principal.
Thank you. So, this week, we're just finishing up our science, technology and engineering cast for grade five, moving on to math for next Tuesday, Monday and Tuesday. Our fifth grade students are preparing for their annual volleyball tournament, which will take place outside. So, we're looking forward to that on the volleyball section between Trotty and Yuri. And lots of planning is being done for Field Day on June 2nd and I'll speak a little bit more to that in a bit. Grade four has an upcoming field trip to Bam's Adventure, which is in Berlin, and their experiences and lessons directly align with our SCL goal and action steps. So, we're super excited. This is the first time we'll be going there. So, that's coming up. And grade five is preparing for their trip to the State House on the Freedom Trail. Mentioning Field Day again, this, it'll be a traditional day of games and activities as well as additional opportunities for team building using Imagination Playground, art projects and technologies such as Osmo. Teachers are...fourth grade teachers are planning these activities, so it should be an exciting day. We're looking forward to it. For Goal One of our school improvement plan, we ended March with grade five's March Madness book talks. Each student created a book talk using various platforms and competed through the brackets to determine a final winner, who was Austin Wu. There's a lot of competition. It was a month-long event, so it was very exciting. Superintendent Martin was able to join us for our final presentations. So, that was, that was great. And in grade four, they're working on their...what was her name? Their presentations, which are extensions. That's what they're called. They're working on their extensions. So, students select a topic, they pose questions, they research, they cite sources and bibliography, they practice their presentations and then using Google Slides, they're...they use a variety of multimedia representations to share their information. And so, they stand up in front of their classmates and they present their projects. In connection to Goal Two, in world language, students have been learning about April Fool's Day, Mardi Gras, Cinco de Mayo, the history in different ways. These may be celebrated in other countries and we're thrilled to be having Ms. Valverde Collado join us again next year. So, that's exciting. She'll go back to Spain for the summer, but she's looking forward to another year with us. Students have been busy in the library with Mrs. Wagner, finishing up their Women in History Month projects in connection to books they had read, their projects... Their projects are quite impressive, and they represent the work and impact these women have had on society. I know it was a couple of months ago, but the projects started with reading and writing, and now students are finding different ways to represent their learning, whether it's through dioramas or PowerPoints, different ways that they want to show their learning. So it brings student choice and voice into their presentations. And then in connection to goal three, healthy and balanced learners, we finished up our kindness is always the first step speaker drive. We collected over 90 pairs of speakers that were donated to local schools. We continue to partner with our senior center and hope next year we can welcome them back into our space and hopefully bring that pause for reading, which they were a big support and assistance with. And finally, I'd like to recognize our Go the Distance Award recipients. They're Nicole Wolus, Jill Baker, and Jen Matthews for being recognized for their work with our students, and they will be honored along with the rest of the recipients on May 19th by NSPAC. And Denise Johnson has once again designed a whole school art project for Art on the Trails. It's called Grow and Take Flight. This proposal is one of 16 art installations that was chosen for this year's exhibit. So each of our Erie students will take part in creating the installation, which is created almost entirely around aluminum, using aluminum, and it will be really large wings and a field of flowers, which will symbolize the importance of exposing ourselves to the good things in life so we can grow and take flight. So students are really excited about that. We collected a lot of aluminum cans, and it's really coming along nicely. We're already beginning to plan for next year by opening our doors to incoming fourth grade families on May 25th, incoming students from Woodward on June 21st, and sending our sixth graders to Trotier on June 3rd. As a staff, we're aligning our work to district themes, researching literature, and we've formed a committee that will be looking at books to partner. We're going to be partnering classrooms next year focused on various books that we choose, many coming from the MCBA collection for this year. That will be shared as of this week, so we'll be looking at those. And then to just follow up on Principal Ryan's persuasive writing that his students were doing, a group of fourth grade students presented a very convincing argument to me this week. And they're from Mr. Finner and Mrs. Ted's class with a written report, PowerPoint, posters about the idea for Kids Appreciation Day. So they thought the whole school should be recognized for their hard work this year, especially during MCAS. It was very convincing. I presented it to team leaders today, and we voted on a special school spirit pajama day coming soon, and they did a really terrific job with their presentation. A lot of hard work went into it, and what was great about it is they, they were representing all students at Erie. And then just again, recognizing School Nurses Day, Deb Parsons has just, as all our nurses have, gone above and beyond this year and just done some really terrific work. And then a big thank you to our SOS for Teacher Appreciation Week last week. It was just amazing from the luncheon to the whoopee pie truck to just the great amount of effort that went into every day, and Erie teachers really felt the appreciated and loved and valued, so that was wonderful. So yeah, it was a great one for Erie.
Questions?
Kathy, I was just gonna ask you for the State House visit. Are there any plans to meet with our state representative?
Yes, so typically we have in the past. I'm not sure the fifth grade teachers are working on this. They just opened it up to visitors, so I know that they typically have in the past, so I'm hoping that can come to fruition. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure of that.
Then that'd be a great opportunity.
Absolutely. Maybe even one year they were able to get into the chin where, so I'm hoping something. Kim, did you have some thoughts? Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
You're welcome.
I think that's it.
I will continue with the trend of celebrating a lot of school culture efforts and events and just some traditions returning to all of our schools because I think it's so important. In the past month, we did have our fifth grade family orientation, and this clocked in at a record two hours and 15 minutes. And I only point that out because I think 75% of the parents and families that attended were first time middle school families. And I think that was such a, so, and this is our first time we've had one in person, so that was wonderful. And I also point out, we had some overly ambitious sixth grade tour guides, which was great. He was amazing. So it was a great night, and it just, it just really speaks to the desire for families and students to reconnect with schools and our teachers and our traditions, you know, at Trotier. Our volleyball marathon had taken place this year. This was the first time for all three grades to ever experience this. I really want to celebrate the work of Mary Rosen and Carrie Pross, who helped lead this. And they ended up raising about $15,000 for SOS, and those funds are critical for our work here at Trotier. They support assemblies, you know, cultural extensions and, you know, professional development for our teachers. We also had Crepe Day here. Yes, if you don't know what Crepe Day is, for all, for $13, it's all you can eat crepes after school. It's part of our world language department efforts and students, we had about over 100 students, you know, eating crepes.
I don't think we remember.
You weren't. You haven't heard the best of it. I mean, they were making Eiffel Towers with pipe cleaners and played Pin the Mustache on Marie Antoinette. And I'm a little worried that the creperie might jump up their price to $15 this year, but it may be worth it. This past weekend, we also had our first play, a live play since 2020. Our Peter Pan production in the fall had to, we had to shift and have a remote production, but Andy Jr. was amazing, the cast, the crew, the teachers, Carolyn Alzpezi, Heather Morris, and Christine Penzone did such a wonderful job, and it was a true celebration of a collective effort. Very proud of our cast and crew. And hot off the presses, we just returned from the eighth grade Woo Sox trip today. Our seventh and eighth grade band and orchestra had the privilege to play the National Anthem before the Woo Sox game today. This is a trip that we've done historically down in Pawtucket, where we've only had the band go, but we have brought the whole eighth grade this year during the day game. And as part of nurses' recognition, Mrs. Baucher, our school nurse, was going to retire, was honored before the game and got to say play ball to start the game. And, thank you, and Greg, and we all wore Baucher 2020s. We did a fit to the students and said that orange is Mrs. Baucher's favorite color, but is actually more, so we could see the kids in the ballpark. Saying that aloud? Anyway, next up is we plan on having a dance May 20th for all three grades. A lot of excitement for that. The last time we had an in-person dance was about a month and a half before the pandemic, so getting a lot of inquiries about attire, just want to let you know it's casual. And I'm trying to get the DJ to play Stairway to Heaven at the last. Up next is that we, there's a return to Titan Games or our Special Olympics. So our students from Neckin Council Program will go to the high school to participate in Special Olympics, which has now been rebranded, the Titan Games. Very excited about that, and we'll hopefully bring some of our peer pal eighth graders to assist in that. We also have the Fun Run, which will take place on May 27th, end of the year awards, eighth grade banquet, and lip sync. So those are some of the return of the traditions and some new traditions that hopefully will carry on. I also want to recognize some of our data collection efforts. We do have the preliminary results from the Metro West Health Survey. We'll be working with an internal team, including Mary Ellen Duggan, to look at some of the trends in the last year. We also have the Equity Audit, which we need to do a deeper dive in within our school. And we also just completed our SCL screener under the guidance of Jennifer Lipton O'Connor. I'm also proud to announce that we're going to do a Trotier School Culture Survey with our students. The goal of this is really to get student voice about the student experience in the school. And then the two big buckets that we're looking at is connectedness, you know, both adult and peer and classroom experience. And so our hope is to use a small group to take a first pass of the survey, get some feedback, and then use this survey, administer the survey at the end of the year, and this will be a leaping point, a leaping point for us at the beginning of next year to share with our teachers. Lastly, the goal of two is to develop a data team over the summer to, you know, collect all this data, you know, formulate it, make sense of the data, and use this and disseminate it at the outset of the year. Also want to talk about, this is an interesting time of year. As my colleagues know, you have one eye on the, at the end of June and one eye on September 1st, and we're going back and forth. So we are using Power School to help in our scheduling process this year. So we're asking, you know, our families to start using the course selection mechanism within Power School to help navigate this. Our seventh graders are very excited. We've rolled out the elections, excuse me, the elective selections for our students in eighth grade that no longer are required to take music and art, but we give them a menu of courses, which range from CPR to gardening to small structures to coding. This year, we're excited to introduce a new genealogy course, which we co-taught, which will have, where students will actually, I don't know if they're going to be using the DNA test kits and start doing some family tree work. Next week, our faculty meeting, our Trotier GSA will present to our staff, I've asked Mrs. Anderson, our guidance counselor, to work with this group to share the student experience from the LGBTQ plus community as they navigate the middle school experience. Really, my goal in this work is that if me as a building principal or my teachers can take, have one takeaway on what we can do differently within our school environment or within the classroom, that would make, make their experience more accepting and inviting. I think that's important, so I'm very excited about that opportunity. Our work around our digital literacy and computer science standards continue to grow. Mrs. Allenson is working with some of our students on effective communication goal. She has secured podcasting equipment, and our students are off and running with their podcasts, so I'll let you know when that wraps up. And lastly, I want to take a moment to recognize a work from our ELA and social studies departments. We just met to discuss the Massachusetts Legislation and Act Concerning Genocide Education. Schools across Massachusetts in the next year have to provide a unit to discuss genocide. And so we're excited about this work, but also kind of a little concerned because if you look at our social studies frameworks, for example, there's no natural on-ramp. So they're not specifically listed within our middle school frameworks within social studies. So we brought our ELA department in there, and so we're looking at this collectively to see how this, this work can be, you know, delivered next year. And I think where we are, you know, in this process is that we know that whatever we do this year will probably not be the same where we'd be two years from now. But we're very excited. You know, we, we met internally, and the next step is that Brittany Burns, the social studies department head from Algonquin, will be working with our team and the team from Melican to continue on having this conversation at the end of May, talking about best practices and how we can roll this out going forward. Yes?
Do we, the community or school committee, get to see or get a summary of potentially the Metro West Survey? And if there, particularly if there are any problem areas or things that we need to be concerned about in terms of program development and other things down the line?
Greg, I don't know what the plan is for when, when we will have.
Yeah, that actually is a question for Mary Ellen and Jennifer Lipton O'Connor. We do, we're formally sharing the results with the school committee, but also the community. And we have a committee of folks who are working on the timing of those presentations and getting information out to parents. Mary Ellen, I'm not sure if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, so far we've only gotten the key indicators.
Yes.
And they said, but later this break, we were supposed to get the full report, we haven't received yet. So we will be working on that to do a presentation for everybody. If you remember, two years ago, we were getting ready to film the Metro West Analyzing Health Survey data to put it out to the community, and one of our members that was going to film with us fell ill, and that was right at the start of the pandemic. And since then, this was the first data we've had since that data in 2018. So we have looked at the key indicators with the medical advisory team amongst each school team has looked at it, and then we're going to hopefully get the full report soon.
Yeah, and the full report will let us also look at differences in, like, pre-panic versus helping us now.
It's longitudinal, so it goes back in 2008, so you get to see, but it's evolved a little bit, but you do get that longitudinal data.
Thank you.
I think our goal is to make sure that families are interacting with this data as well. We have, you know, based on some of the data that we have received, are seeing some changes that, you know, we need to make sure we're addressing and supporting students. But again, more information will be shared with the school committee, but also the community and parents in the next months ahead, as soon as we get the data.
Gary, you talked about the data work that is going to be happening ongoing, so I'm happy to hear that because I think that will make sure that the info we learn from Equity Audit doesn't just stop there and kind of can piggyback. And I wonder if one of the questions or things that you inquire about can be the class offerings, right, for the seventh and eighth grade, so it's going to change?
So we have an elective program. So we run about 15, you know, courses, you know, each year, you know, and so, but we could get feedback, we have not solicited feedback in terms of those offerings in the past.
I think that might be interesting to kind of hear, because we know what we want to offer as a community, as educators, but interesting to kind of hear from the kids. One of the things that strikes me as important is some sort of financial awareness.
So we do have a financial literacy class, so that's been up and running for about five or six years now. They, yeah, so that's, but it's eighth grade only, and it's, and it's, you know, and I would say collectively in a year, maybe about 40 students take the class.
Yeah, we need more of that.
Mrs. Allenson's done a wonderful job. She, you know, she does a stock market game with them at the outset of the year. They choose, they choose their stocks, they kind of monitor their stocks, they look at profits throughout. Part of that work, she's actually doing a career day. She's inviting, we just sent out invitations, and so folks are coming in to meet with her students from now until the rest of the year, kind of, you know, kind of, so students can understand the pathways to get to these careers, so.
Gary, I have a quick question. I was wondering if you could share with the committee the connectedness.
Sure.
And I think that actually is really, it really ties in nicely to the Equity Audit and the idea that we want the kids to feel belonging.
Thank, thanks for reminding that, Kim. So, you know, historically, and we did not do it this year, and this is on me, but what we've historically done with Keith and Linda Murdock is what we call the dot activity. And I think maybe school committee members had heard this in the past, where, you know, we identify, we take every student here in the building and we ask our faculty to identify, you know, a connection that they have with students, and we kind of, you know, kind of quantify as best we can, you know, saying, you know, know two or three things about them personally. And then the goal is really to have this visual representation where based, based on every student that's on the sheet, you notice maybe, you know, some students have five or six dots, and some students have one or zero. And so what would happen is that, you know, after that, the charge of the faculty would be, okay, we need to start bringing these kids back, and how can we start, you know, making those connections? And so we've done this work, and it's been great. One of the things that, that came out of that work was, you know, teachers said, I wonder if we can do something, you know, in the inverse, you know, how can we get solicited student feedback about how they feel, like, we feel like we're connected, and then we could put six dots next to someone, but I don't know if Joey really feels that, you know? So the importance was, you know, how can we get that response from students? And so what we are going to try this year is that student survey. And really, that's why I think we mentioned that, that connection piece. So we want to, we really want to hear if students are feeling connected to adults here in the building, and it's not just teachers, it's, you know, administration, our office staff, you know, everyone, you know, our custodians. We also asking them, what are like one or two things that we do well? You know, what are one or two things we don't do well? You know, and, you know, for me as building principal, if I can identify, you know, some low hanging fruit that, you know, as we can change here in the school, or teachers can pivot in their classroom for next year, I think that's pretty. I think that's pretty impressive, you know? So, and, you know, we're going to use that. We're going to use this data. We're going to show the students, you know, what they said. We're going to start, you know, having some focus groups as well and get, you know, kind of exploring that. So, yeah, I mean, I think connection was our District Three theme this year. I think it's so critical in the middle school. I think rebuilding it coming out of, you know, the last two years is really going to be a driver of our work going forward.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
COVID-19 update?
So yes, so we have Mary Ellen Duggan, who will provide our COVID-19 update. But before I turn it over to Mary Ellen, I just wanted to take a moment and also acknowledge our school nurses in Southborough. Healthy and balanced learners is such an important part of the work we do, part of our strategic plan, our strategic objective. And our nurses on any normal year play such a critical role in that work. In the past two years, they have been some heroes. They have been impacted significantly and risen to the challenge, and have done amazing work. So I just want to, on behalf of the district leadership team, thank our Southborough school nurses for their amazing work and dedication to the kids. And also just acknowledge Mary Ellen. Mary Ellen has been the glue and the leader of that work and has done a nice job trying to keep people positive and upbeat during a very, very difficult time to be a school nurse. So thank you, Mary Ellen, and thank you to the nursing team.
Yes, they are amazing, as everybody has said. I would be nowhere without them. We would be nowhere without them. First of all, I want to start off with a proclamation from the governor for today. And it says, whereas students have a future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they're at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has emphasized the essential role school nurses play in student health and academic success. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and in ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years. And whereas school nurses address the home and community factors that impact students' health. And whereas students act as, school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses are members of school-based teams, the health services team, the 504 IEP disaster, emergency planning, crisis teams, to address the school population. Whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for every child every day. And whereas school nurses should be celebrated for their efforts in meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools. And whereas school nurses contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn and keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on this Massachusetts school nurse day, but at every opportunity throughout the year. So therefore, I, Charles D. Baker, Governor of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim May 11, 2022, to be Massachusetts School Nurse Day, and urge all the citizens of the Commonwealth to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. So whereas that is done, I cannot thank the nurses enough. The thanks that all of us have for them. They've been amazing throughout the past two and a half years. Not that they weren't amazing before that, but they have really stepped up simply through these past years. So if you have nurses in your lives, Nurses Week goes through to tomorrow, so make sure you let them know. Okay, so COVID. Here we are again. Here we are again. So you all know that the dashboard is available to everybody. Whoops. Dashboard is updated for today. Our numbers are rising steadily, as you can see. Here they are for the past five weeks, not four weeks. The numbers in Southborough have risen dramatically in the past two weeks as they have in the schools, as they have in the town also. So this is available, they, weekly, the COVID-19 dashboard is updated, and the daily positive case count is updated daily. So people can access that as needed to see the actual numbers in each elementary school classroom. So this question has come up recently due to the increased cases at Woodward and Neary. And what actually happens when the attendance percentage is less than 92%? So the medical advisory team meets weekly. And sometimes we talk two to three times a week when the numbers are higher so that we can have everybody's input as to what our decisions are, what our recommendations are, and are we on the right path? Do we need to make any changes? So when the data, we look at the numbers when they're steady, they're above 93, everything's going well. Once in a while, you'll see a little blip, and it'll be like, it'd be 92. And, but there were only five absences. So, I mean, five cases that week. So the absences were due to something else other than COVID. The past, last week at Woodward and this week at Woodward and Neary, the numbers are below 92%. So the medical advisory team has reviewed the data, and we did consult with the local board of health director for their approval. So that's where this, this is our steps that have written in our policy about what we would do. So when the medical advisory team met the past two weeks, their recommendations were, this week especially, the recommendations were for the superintendent to send out, send out a letter to all of the families in the Southborough schools to advise that people participate in the testing, that everybody masks, that you stay home if you're sick. It's the same things we've been saying since the beginning. Nothing's changed. So that was the recommendation of the medical advisory team after reviewing all of the data. And the health directors and the health agents are on the medical advisory team, and they agreed with the recommendations. So it stopped there. There was no decision to be made to reinstate the mask because it was not a recommendation at this time. So what data does the medical advisory team review? This is just restating what Mr. Martino sent out earlier this week. We look at the case counts for the state, the town, and the school. We look at attendance data. We look at wastewater data that's available. We look at our vaccination rates, the variants that we're hearing about, and hospitalizations and death. So this week especially, we've been, the past two weeks, sorry, we look at every absence. We have the absence list. We can see who is out for what reasons. So we look at if it's out for because they're on isolation. Are they out because they're quarantined? Are they out for other symptomatic symptoms that they've tested negative? Or are they out for non-medical reasons? So when we're looking at all that case monitoring and looking at all that data, those are the things we're looking at because not all the absences are due to COVID. So we have to take that into, into.
Consideration.
We have to think about that while we're making our decisions. So consideration, thank you, Colleen. So those are the things that we look at when we're doing this. We also consult with Department of Public Health epidemiologists to just make sure that we're doing everything that's recommended from them. And they recommended the things that we've been doing. If we have, if we participated in a testing program, to promote the testing program. To have access to our antigen tests that we have offered to families. They can opt in. And if you've opted in, we've given out extra tests if you're in a classroom where there seems to be a little cluster of cases. And we, and to recommend masking. We consulted with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and they said the same thing. They said, are you testing? Are you pool testing? Are you, did you recommend masking? Are you monitoring the numbers of cases? And it's yes to all of that. So I think that we are doing our due diligence when it comes to the case counts, and we're monitoring the trends, and that's what we need to do.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Can I have a question? So if you explain in the process there, when do you communicate with the principals? And I'm guessing there might be two things. You're communicating to them, and then they're, or they're, and they're communicating to you. It might be vice, you know, both that directions. And then in turn, the principals then kind of taking any additional changes operationally in the school? Or maybe there is a, you know, classroom meeting, you know, where the principal says to teachers, teachers, please reiterate to the students A, B, C, D.
So we're in communication more often than these people want to be with me. But the first thing starts when there's a cluster of cases. We'll start small. There's a cluster of cases in a classroom. With three or more cases in a classroom in a short amount of time, I will send an email to those, that class, the people in that class. The principal and the nurse get a copy of that one call that's sent that says what we were going to do. We've recommended that, just, we've postponed kindergarten screening. We've postponed orientations during this spike that we're having. So we are in communication whenever we notice that something needs to be changed.
I have a question. Do you want me to wait until you're done?
It doesn't matter. What if this is a good time for that stuff?
So how, after you sent the communication about recommended masks, how many, what percentage of students were actually coming in masked? Particularly in the, in the classrooms that were, like, how we call them?
I can answer the first part of that. When the, we've had little clusters at different schools. And when it's the individual class, I would say about 98% of the students will be sent that email, the original, the first email, come in the next day masked, and then it comes up.
And then I guess my follow-up question, I ask because my daughter was in, in a double class who, the other class had a bunch of cases. And then she said I was like the only student who, so they didn't get specifically the email. But I ask, like, because the follow-up question to this is that back initially when we were talking about mitigation strategies and told me about that, kind of the Swiss cheese model. And back when there was another outbreak in Neary, we had all of these mitigation strategies in place, which we don't currently have as many. If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but the masks are now potentially optional. There's less social distancing in classrooms. The lunchroom situations are different. And then back when that other outbreak happened, we were told, or we basically, a response that we were told is that lunch situation changed temporarily. So I'm wondering what's different about now? Do we know anything different based on the data? Or why medical advisory is suggesting that at this point we require less mitigation or less reaction to those spikes?
I think we've learned a lot. As, you know, as time goes on, we learn more and more. And I think we're at a place where we know that the hospitalization and death rates are down. The, how ill people are getting is, it's not as ill as before, although there are some people who do get very ill. I think we take into consideration all of those things when making these decisions. I think we're getting to a point, as you know, like, the word endemic has been thrown out there here and there. I know nobody's really said we're endemic stage yet, but I think that's where we need to start looking, where it becomes a personal responsibility. Like, I have a personal responsibility to wear my, to stay home if I'm ill. Like, that's, that's, needs to be done. That's the number one thing I can ask of anybody, is to just stay home if you're sick. And not, we've had people who had fevers in the morning, but they tested negative, still come to school. The old rules still apply. You know, fever free for 24 hours. You have to be, you know, 24, talk to 24 hours with the alimony. All of those things still apply. Just because you test negative for COVID doesn't mean you should still come to school. You know, if you're symptomatic and you test negative, can you come to school? Yes, you should wear a mask if you're, if you're well enough to be in school. If you meet all those other criteria, fever free for 24 hours. You know, if you have a running nose, yes, you can come to school if you test the negative. So I think we need to just know that we have a personal responsibility to ourselves and to our community. And, you know, mask if you're in a higher risk situation. You know, to stay home if you're sick and test if you have symptoms. I think those are the recommendations that we can make, and we need to all start thinking more that way, that we're going to have to somehow, that COVID is not going away.
Yeah, and I guess, and my question kind of arises out of this, like, personal responsibility piece, right, because we know that our test, our pool testing rates aren't really that high, right? We know that now that it's an option not to wear masks, that most kids are not wearing masks. And I'm glad to hear that, you know, when that one classroom where the spike was, they at least did for, at least for a few days after. And so that's why I wanted to bring that up because now that it's, that responsibility has shifted onto individual parents that should, as a school should, or a district, should we be thinking about things like changing lunch setups in cases when we're having spikes? But again, that's just one of, those are some of the concerns.
So the lunch has come up a few times. The questions about, you know, this seems to coincide with when we went back to tables at lunch. So we have, we reviewed the data from the high school who's been at tables and not distanced, and the close contacts there. And the, the risk wasn't higher for transmission in the lunchroom or in the classroom. So in the lunchroom, when they were unmasked, in the classroom, when they were masked, the transmission happened at a greater risk in the classroom rather than the lunchroom from what we saw from when we were doing contact tracing. So I think we need to keep that in mind. I think we need to keep in mind that we've seen spikes in the towns in the three districts. Thank God they don't all happen at the same time. But, you know, like, it seems to, we've seen, there's a school in Northborough that's starting to see a little uptick. So is it going to shift to Northborough now? We're going to see the numbers in Northborough rise, and the numbers in the school rise. It just mirrors what's happening in the community. We have a community positivity rate at 12.6. It's, there would be no way to keep it out of the schools with the community rate that high. So I think that that's important to look at, that we do have that data from the high school, that they've been sitting at the tables, not distanced. And the rate, the transmission rate wasn't high. I think that at lunch, they sit with their classes at these tables. So they're with them all day, masked, unmasked. We do have accommodations and different arrangements for people who wish to not sit at the tables. They don't want their children to sit at the tables. They want them to sit a little bit more distance. And there are desks around the perimeters of the cafeterias for those families that, that choose that.
And lunch outside has not been considered as an, I'm sorry, I realize I have a lot of questions.
That's okay. There, there are a lot of questions, so that's fine. Glad to hear, probably.
These are the questions you are receiving.
We get them all the time. So I think lunch outside would be a choice of the teachers on lunch duty. And what's reasonable, I think snack outside is a great idea. That's what we did for the first half of the, beginning of the year. Now that the weather's nice. PE outside is a great idea. Using outdoor classrooms as much as possible when the weather's nice is always a great idea. Opening the windows, keeping the HEPA filters running. Keith's team has been monitored, continuing to clean and monitor the CO2 levels. So I think there's a lot of mitigation that still goes on, and that personal responsibility is really high in there now.
As in my, sorry. Oh, you got it. My, this is my final comment. This is related, I emailed you about this, actually. This is related to my daughter. But I'm wondering if there's a disconnect sometimes when, so my daughter had COVID in the August or October spike. She was told not to test for 90 days afterwards, and she was enrolled in the pool testing. And then I just happened to realize that she's no longer, I was told that she would just get automatically after those 90 days enrolled in that. So I'm wondering if we're looking at families who are once, because we've had so many with COVID, whether or not we actually go back and look at those families if they're being re-enrolled into the pool testing? Maybe that's part of the decrease test rate.
Yeah, I think it's been pretty steady, even though with, you know, the increased number of cases, we're going to see decrease. But I think that the nurses have let that be known in packets. There's the packets I know we went through, or however, whenever the packets go out, that to notify them if you want to. Because originally, they were just automatically re-enrolling people, and people didn't roll them down. So now it's the parent's responsibility to notify the nurse. You're still consented. All you have to do is call and say, can you please send out a test kit? Or if you didn't get one that week and you want them tested that day, can you please test my child at school?
So a child has, so if a student has COVID after 90 days, the parents must re-opt it.
So a child has, so if a student has COVID after 90 days, the parents must re-opt it.
But we could say a reminder, saying, you know.
They just have to call the nurse and say, "Can you please send home kids again?" That's it.
So maybe that's from the school level too, or, or mentioned, yeah.
Thank you. Katoura?
If I follow on, just related to that, Katoura?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you. So the 90 days comes from where?
From the CDC.
Comes from the CDC?
So that's what it is. So for 90 days, the PCR tests are sensitive, and they can pick up small amounts, trace amounts of residual, non-see genetic material of the virus for up to 90 days. We actually have had a few instances where our pool testing is, it's not cycle threshold, it's a different kind of testing, and it's very, very sensitive, that someone was on day 97, and it popped up positive about them, they were negative, they had two follow-up tests. So this has happened a couple of times, so.
Not a perfect chance.
Exactly.
I'm sorry.
No, so I, my question has to do with the policy. So my recollection of the policy was that if attendance got below 92, the masks, the masking requirement would be reinstated. But I guess what I'm learning is that if it's below 92% due to COVID, because I know there are a lot of other bugs going around right now, so I can put a lot of kids out. So is that, is that what it is, that we look at how?
So it's multi-step.
Okay.
And then we go through each step.
Yeah.
And depending on what that step indicates, whether, you know, when we convene the medical advisory team, if the step that they're recommending is to mask, then that moves us to a different reaction or action that we need to take.
Nice. So the attendance percentage prompts the meeting?
But it doesn't prompt automatic masking, maybe.
Gotcha.
So these are the words, right, from the policy?
Yeah, right, very, very.
And that 92%, yeah, Roger.
Please.
That 92%, is that, are you looking at like weekly when you do this? Or is it like every day, or how, what are?
When the rates were high, we were looking at daily.
Okay.
So, but typically it's weekly. Like this is our case monitoring, oh, I need access. I need to crank, I need access to that, so, sorry.
I'll also share, one of the conversations the medical advisory team had yesterday, I believe it was yesterday, was also what mitigation efforts can we put in place without disrupting the educational experience significantly? So that, that was something that we had a lot of conversations around, and they did, I think, they did share that it was important that we weren't disrupting the experience of students so much what we've done in the past. So allowing small group disruption, allowing those experiences to happen in the classroom were really important to the medical advisory team, and applying mitigation that didn't really have a substantial impact to the students' experience was something we did look at.
And do they have that same recommendation if masks? Are they, are they assuming that masks will be on?
Part of the conversation was masks are, you know, do change the learning environment, they can change the environment. So that was part of the conversation.
So these are the numbers that we looked at. So the medical advisory team meets every Tuesday, but we meet via email many times during the week. So the communication from Mr. Martino came out on Monday, because we had talked on Sunday, and then Monday saw what the data was, again on Monday, went from that. So they have been more than gracious to, we had our fingertips to drop over the dime, really. So these are the numbers from where, as you can see, we did it daily. We've been doing it daily since last Monday, when we started to see an increase in cases. So they, and we look at what the cases are from and why, and you can see they're slowly going down, which is nice. I'm guessing we'll see a similar trend at near this week, where we'll see a peak either today and tomorrow with the absence, and then it'll trend up. So I think that we do look at a lot of data. You know, we have the epidemiologist from Northborough, and then from the tri-borough towns that's on our team, and she shares that with us, on the medical advisory, so.
I also think it's important to mind, folks, that we just came off of vacation. It doesn't feel that way, but, you know, two weeks ago, we had a vacation, and, you know, we tend to see an increase in number of cases as a result of traveling and family experiences, and I think that partly is impacting some of the data that we're seeing within our system at this point.
A lot of people traveled over April.
And we see, we see an uptick historically?
Yeah, historically, we have not seen it right after breaks, but after this break, we did.
No, I disagree with that. I feel like in the past, every, the data showed that after the breaks, typically like two weeks after, we would see an uptick. I feel like that's something that we.
They get the February, if we look at last year's data, after February break, we didn't see an uptick until the end of March, beginning of April. So we really didn't see it specifically right after breaks, whereas we did see it this April was the first time we'd actually really seen it. And I mean, after December, we saw.
December.
Yeah, December we saw.
But I think you're right. I think that there was a lot of pent-up, what's the word I want to use, desire to travel for the April that I don't think we saw in February. People were just ready, just ready to travel. So there was a lot of that.
I also think, looking at a year ago, what types of mitigation processes and efforts were in place more globally, there was a lot more where, right now, the reality is, in most settings, the mitigation efforts are nonexistent. So it's just a different, very different department that we're seeing at this point.
I have another question. I don't know if it's a good time. They talk about our families, but particularly our students that may be at more risk. And how are we thinking about them?
In regards to?
They're just with COVID.
Like masking, so the, like the mask guy.
Are we, are we reaching out?
The boards of health, our, you know, child size can, can, five.
So we have quality masks there at the schools.
Like, do we know who they are? Like, do we, I mean, we obviously know who they are.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, like, what are we doing with that segment of our families?
Typically, when we have the, as a school nurse, if you know that someone is immunocompromised, you would have a plan with the parents to notify them specifically if there's even, not like cluster cases, but even one case in the classroom, or even if it's strep in the classroom or flu in the classroom. So the nurses have a plan with them, whether they need accommodations in the classroom, or, you know, that would be a 504 plan, or just their healthcare plan with the nurses.
Okay, right.
For that communication. So I just, just after April break last year, our total case counts were four, Oxford and Southborough was zero, I believe, one, zero, and two. So we really didn't see it last year. This year, we started after.
December.
After December with, that, that was when the new variant was.
But it was really starting before our break, right?
Starting before, yeah. And, you know, like the different variants we're seeing, I haven't heard of the variant for still.
So the, the one item that we do have in our favor is the time of year, the weather, and getting kids outside to eat lunch. There are many more opportunities to have lessons outside, and that's something that I know principals will encourage educators to do when it's not raining. So I just, we're under a month of rain now, so I just have that. But again, getting outside is really important, and being in the fresh air, I think is the best mitigation layer that we can provide.
Do we track severity of illness? Or do we know if we have any kids in the community who, what, we know that there's at least one who is hospitalized or post-COVID? Do we have any other data or information on other severe illness cases?
I don't have any data. I mean, anecdotally, I don't have the numbers, but the nurses would usually tell me. I do think we do have a few students who have some long-term fatigue or things like that. I think we're going to see more of like a pandas thing with COVID too. I think, you know, any post-infectious thing, but I think we'll see that as we learn more. We'll see more.
Do you, do you think it's accurate to say that most of our students, most of the students who've had COVID have recovered fully and resumed?
Yes. Most are mildly symptomatic or asymptomatic, short-lived symptoms. Our students and our staff.
Katoura, are you good?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Well, a comment and then a question about attendance. When I made the comment that I wrote to Katoura's, related to, we don't automatically trigger masking based on attendance. It wasn't really, it wasn't really offered as a question. It was, it was actually kind of confirmed that when we, when we put this policy into place, we, I think, were deliberate in not wanting to have a trigger like that. We wanted to basically provide the medical advisory team and administration a chance to look at what was going on before then any decision was made to everybody mask, okay or not. But, so I think, to me, it's, you know, we're handling it the way we ought to handle it, but just, you know, a person here. Regarding attendance, it seems to me that there's two, two reasons students are out. One is they're sick, and this could be COVID symptom, it could be something else. And two, maybe related to some kind of quarantine, either close contact, or is that not necessarily a significant part of absenteeism now?
It's not a significant part anymore.
Okay, so it's not a significant part. So pretty much, it's either symptoms or sickness, okay.
I think the people who were quarantined, we have one or two.
So.
And that was like a family choice, because everybody else in the household is positive, and they are doing their, they're being responsible in keeping that one person home, even though they're vaccinated and not positive, they could come to school, but they're keeping them home. And then other people who are not vaccinated have to stay home if they have household contacts.
One last question. When hearing that are with our spikes, one, change to our mitigation is the recommendation for masks. That's kind of, pretty much the difference, right?
Recommendation to mask, we provide additional testing. Some classes, we recommend that you test every day before coming. And we have found some cases that way.
Okay.
Presymptomatically, they've tested positive.
Like with your family, you test, or do you, are you like coming through the classroom?
No, 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 no.
No, okay, okay.
I mean, if the family called and didn't have access to it, that's.
Okay. I'm wondering if we would be able to get a little bit of data, since we're currently in this fight, of like the next email that you have to send, like what that looks like for the next three days? Like our people, like instead of just relying on the anecdotes, like what is happening? Like what happens in our community when the spike happens? They get the note from you with the recommendation to masking, like what does that look like?
So are we sharing a link to say what the steps are?
No, I mean, like, if it's a classroom that has a cluster, and they get the email from whoever, from Ariel, I'm sorry, can the teacher, like, give account of kids with masks?
I see. Yeah, I think we can get better data on who's masking and not masking. I think that's a, that's something we can try.
Since it's really our biggest change, right?
And I think that, you know, I think we have high compliance when there's a specific call to a class that has a cluster for masking. We are seeing low compliance just in general in terms of kids coming to school masking, even over the past, you know, week or two weeks where we've seen spike cases.
What happens, we know that cluster is in.
But we should, we should be able to say 25% of our kids are wearing masks, or 100% of kids in classes where there's a cluster are wearing masks. So that would be the data we have.
Okay, okay.
I want that data too, but as long as it's not taking away from someone's job function, right? And they're supposed to be teaching in a classroom, you know, and you're, the students are seated, and so you could just clearly make that observation fine. But if you're actually taking like 10% of someone's time to do, go through the schools and do that counting?
I don't, I feel like it should be the whole school. Like, we have a classroom with a cluster.
Understood.
Like, let's just.
What is that data going to show us, if you don't mind me asking?
So I think it's important to know, like, what, as a community, we're sort of doing, right? Like, what is happening? Because it is the only change to the mitigation that we have when we have these spikes. Like, is it?
I think that the challenge is, it's hard to isolate exactly what changed and what impacted. So for example, was it masking? Was it social distancing? Was it student experiences outside of?
Yes, but we must have some reason that masking is our, like, recommendation, right? We want them to mask.
I think it goes back to how is this spread? It's spread by respiratory droplets, right? So it's spread respiratory, any respiratory precautions from the beginning of time were for your medical person to wear a mask to protect themselves.
So don't we know how many children, how many students in a cluster classroom are wearing something to control the aerosols?
Or can, maybe, it's not, it's not so much, I don't hear that you're posing a question, right? You're actually making a statement, which is.
Yeah, right.
If you can offer that information, it would help families to make their decision, like, you know, form their personal choice to say, wow, that classroom is really only doing 10%? One family may say, well, I'm still going to make a choice to send Simone to class today. Another family might make a different choice, right? So I think it's just.
I think it's important data too for the district. Like, if this is your recommendation, because we want them to do it, if in general they are not doing it, then you might need to reconsider what we're, you know what I mean? Like, maybe not, but.
But I think as long as, as long as it's a recommendation, it's a choice. And we can recommend, and it's a choice, and families have to make a decision that is right for their family and their context. I think, well, if, if the medical advisory team acts and says, "We need universal masking across setting in this school, because we are seeing X, Y, and Z," then we'll do that.
But I don't even think that I'm, like, I'm not saying like the universal masking is where to go, but like, we're not doing other things. Like, we're not, because we want, don't want to disrupt the, the day for the students. We're not changing lunch, you know? But, you know, there are more options, right? That, that this is kind of where we're going. So if this is where we're going.
I think that the district or the teachers could make a decision too. You know, if you make your, your recommendation is to go mask, I'm not sure how I feel about this, but your recommendation is to suggest that people mask, and then 30% of the classroom is masking, so that, and you're in the midst of a spike. So as a district or as a teacher, do you want to say, well, maybe we'll do less group, close group work today? Or maybe, that's where I think the data could be useful. You're right, it's not that we're like saying, absolutely have to do it, but then by knowing what percentage of the student body is actually following that mitigation strategy, it might lead to decisions on, or like, let's have lunch outside, or let's do group work outside, kind of, right? Whereas if it's 98% of the students masking, then you probably feel like, oh, it would, maybe it's less important to do these other mitigation strategies. But it's also the mask quality, right? So you could have kids wearing cloth masks, you know, yes. So I don't know how you would do that.
I think we're a very different type of context right now, and thankfully, we do have medical advisory team, confident with their recommendations. But all of those examples are great examples of, it's the small things, it's little things that teachers make decisions around every day, around, okay, I have a cluster in my class, I'm not going to work with another classroom across the hall, or I'm not going to put kids in small groups, or a finite period of time while the cluster hopefully disappears.
And there's a lot of parent anxiety, I mean, but there's a lot of parent anxiety about that. And two, if I, as a parent, had a child who had, or a family member with a high-risk health category, but I knew that, hey, you know, 90% of this class is masking, I probably would be less anxious about it. So and we definitely see that chatter, I think, on like social media and email and other places, where there's a lot of parent concern about what's the district doing, and how are we going to address this, or my child, or that, and this.
So we, I think, yeah, that last part says, to support Kim's request, is that it helps to dispel misinformation. Jen today shared an experience about her own child and what she saw, but, you know, I could say something about the feedback I received from my child's classroom, which was, oh, I did see an increase in students wearing masks, right? So, but those are. So, but those are just personal, one-on-one stories. The loudest one, you know, you never know which one is going to be the one that is heard. And so I guess to support your request, Jen, is that it would provide a little bit of dispelling the misinformation.
And what a perfect time. I'm not saying that this should be like a big ask, like it should not be a big ask. Like one time when you do an attendance, like how many?
We could do, you know, I mean, I would actually turn to the principals because I'm not the one who's going to be putting my chat to us. Is it something that we could?
Yeah, I think as easy as teachers do their lunch counts, they could just see in the classroom.
And not every, like the cluster, like the ones where we're seeing a lot, and they're getting that email with the recommendation.
And how, can I just ask, just logically, how is this going to be communicated to those parents who?
It may not be to the parents, but.
Okay. I mean, I think, I don't think it's a bad idea. Usually the nurses will say, oh, it's about 35% of the class. Or do you know what I mean when I ask them? Or 98% of the class? And usually that one person ends up putting the mask on before the end of the day.
Or taking it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's situational. And that's going to be the challenge of gathering this data, where kids coming off of the bus or getting out of their parents' vehicle in the morning, I see more masks, and then as the day goes on and the kids go outside to recess and the mask is hanging around their neck on the lanyard, it never goes back on. And that might be a personal decision, you know, a family conversation where you've talked to your child about wearing a mask and it comes down to them putting it on or not. We're not in a position to mandate that, so that has to be, you know, the child's decision. So I think that gathering that data, while it could be helpful, I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be accurate based on when, in fact, we actually collect it, you know, morning versus middle of the day versus end of the day. And I think if we're gathering it multiple times, then it does become a larger ask.
I agree with Principal Mucci. And it depends, if you're in small group, they may be putting their masks on if they're in a more intimate setting. Or if they're sitting at their desks individually, they might have the mask off. So it would be various times in the day where we may be collecting.
Can I just counter? And I think that, you know, I think we can have more conversations around what we can and can't do. But I think that, you know, we could do it for, we could do it for a week and say, you know, we had this number of cases clustered in eight classrooms. Over this week, we had 95% of clients a mask wearing. And we could then say, in generality, and typically when we see clusters in classrooms, we see mask, you know, 90% of the kids masking.
I mean, it could be linked to your email going out, because how many times, you haven't had to send an email out like that. This is the first time, I think, I've seen. So if it's only like a one-time ask, you know, every, once every four months. But I do wonder, you know, I think it's interesting though, because like what about Finn? You know, there's all these issues about the little kids probably aren't wearing their mask correctly. So like what does, what is that data going to show? And my daughter does the same, so she went in with a mask and then she came home without one. And she's like, yeah, I lost it somewhere during the day. You know, so I don't know, she could have been wearing it for five minutes. So I don't know how reliable the data will be. But I do think it is a data point that we can say to families, we send out this mitigation ask, it's a family choice whether or not to do this. And this is generally what we see after it, is that a high compliance rate versus a low compliance rate. And that way, it eases some of the anxiety.
That's a thing. And I don't want to speak for the other principals, but if it's going to be a full week time, I would prefer one of us just loop through and take that data than the teacher counting the students who are wearing them and not wearing them. They just think that would be more our responsibility to take that data in the short term.
Either that or the nurse.
Or the nurse, one of them.
It's just the cluster classes.
Right.
Yes.
I agree, I think that would be easier for us. And not even the school nurse, I think that the national school nurse.
But I think that's something we can handle.
Yeah.
And hopefully it becomes an on-the-shoot point.
All right, well, thank you for that great conversation on that. I think we can take that.
Does that conclude your?
I, I think my last slide was just about personal responsibility. About staying home if you're ill, test if you have symptoms, wear a mask if you are symptomatic, or in close contact, or returning after shortened ventilation or quarantine. And then those, we have our personal choices, whether you want to wear a mask in a higher-risk environment, it's like situational, like most people are saying, and participate in testing. So if nobody has any more questions, I'm done.
Thank you. Legislative update?
So just a brief update. The Senate Ways and Means Relief Set by 23 Budget. And for the town of Southborough, it's minimum eight communities. So the governor's budget was $30. The Senate Ways and Means Lease Budget is $60. So that is additional funding. If that is the budget that moves forward and is passed, that would go to the town of Southborough. So it's good news. Circuit Breaker reimbursement is pretty much level funded with the governor's budget and the Senate budget. So we're hoping to see some relief in that area. But we continue to advocate and monitor as the budget moves forward. And as our Woodward ambassadors share, nothing moves quickly in terms of taxing budgets and bills and so forth. And then if it's the will of the committee, the principals have homework to do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Start to determine how to do the cluster mask counts.
Right.
The strategy for it. Yeah, it's interesting that folks learn at a very early age. I want to take the legislative process, isn't it? I thought that was, I thought that was very, very stupid. Very, very stupid. So next is town meeting recap. I prepared about a 45-minute summary of this, but I'm going to try to do this in about 120 seconds. It's really related just to school committee budget. First time that I can remember in a long time, a citizen actually recommended that the budget be held, and it was an amendment to reduce the budget by an amount that was equal to the SEDP rent. Usually people who hold budgets are the advisory committee that select them. So I think honestly, it was somewhat of a misunderstanding about, I guess I'm going to say revolving funds. And as three of us went to the mic, the superintendent went to the mic first to explain that revolving fund is not part of the budget. And I briefly went to the mic, followed by the advisory chair, to just try to confirm how much oversight goes into, I guess, revolving funds expenditures. So the short form, and I'm going to give you the short form. And anyone that sees this meeting and has a question about revolving funds, feel free to email the school committee, email the district. We'll try to answer the email if it's something we think that may be important for the community to understand because there is no, because of a lack of understanding, we'll handle it in the meeting. Basically, the rent revolving funds, and it's not just the SEDP rent that went into that fund. It's also Asset Valley Collection Collaborative. It's also Southborough Access Media, my Terry. And they are designated for a specific purpose because when you rent the facilities, you're putting wear and tear on the facilities. So those funds are restricted to being spent for unplanned types of maintenance, you know, or something that would be related to facility repair. One of the things that we haven't done in the school committee meetings, the district always provides, you know, we always take a look at where we are in the operating budget, and we also take a look at grants. But we don't really review the revolving fund disbursements on a regular basis. So starting with the next meeting, we'll actually review, we'll review that. You know, it's not going to take long. And I think it'll basically clear up any questions that anyone might have. And I'm not sure that, since we've overseen this, and frankly, advisory oversees it also as they do a number of the revolving funds in town. So that's my summary. Would you like to add anything at this point?
Well said.
And are there any questions from the committee at this point? Thank you. We'll move on to business updates and plan for next year.
Yeah, so the Transportation Department, Keith and Linda McGrath have been busy preparing for next year. So this evening, Keith will give an update of some of the analysis that we've done and recommendations that we received and plans to implement those for next year.
Thank you, Greg. Well, thank you for this opportunity. I also hope the principals are watching this on the way home, but I really wanted to send a huge thank you to them during this entire process. This was a major change for our entire, both communities of Northborough and Southborough. And we are right now in the middle of the implementation, in the beginning of the analysis phase. So tonight's update is first going to start with a huge thank you, not only to the principals and the teachers that have been amazingly flexible, including Mr. Finner, who's in the audience, but the community at large. I continue to receive very good questions. We continue to make adjustments, and I think that's just going to be part of an ongoing process. But I will certainly share that as we get further down. Just to go back to the reasons why we did this and the intention of the start time change was to improve the experience, especially for our older adolescent students at Algonquin. Anecdotally, I have heard from families, granted, we haven't done a formal survey on this because it still is a little young in its infancy, and we have some adjustments we want to make. But anecdotally, I have spoken to a number of high school families that says that it has made a difference and a positive impact for them. You know, even the simple advantage of getting up 45 minutes later in some cases has changed the whole scope of their day for their, you know, either sophomore or junior student, for the families that I spoke to. So going back to the reasons why, you know, there's certainly going to be more opportunities to analyze this further, and that's a commitment that the district has had throughout, to go back to why we are making this change in the first place and seeing it through. Where we are on the process is, you know, ongoing communication is key, especially as we make adjustments, and I will be sharing that a little further. I would say we are in the middle of the implementation process. That is something that's going to be ongoing. And I am going to share some of the adjustments that we'll have for the upcoming year. And then the deeper analysis, that was a piece that we actually started a little earlier than I anticipated. We did go with a consultant over the winter months to analyze a lot of the data that we had collected in the infancy of this in the first four to five months. So this is something I'm going to be showing in the next slide or two. So what we've done to date is we have reviewed our routes and continue to do so daily almost in a lot of respects. Linda McGrath, who is our new transportation specialist, she has been making adjustments to those as new students are being added to the district. So that's not just something that's one and done, it is ongoing. Also, behind the scenes, we're doing a lot of development of the 2022-2023 plan, which I'll share more about. And then most importantly from this slide is that we wanted to have a performance analysis conducted. And this was done by a consultant firm named Transpar. That is the same firm that did our analysis of our bus transportation system back in 2018. So they had the historical data that they collected four years ago and comparing that to now. So before I get into that, I do want to send a huge thank you to Jean Pinto. Jean Pinto retired at the end of April. She is the architect for our bus routes and what was done during this start time implementation. And she was, she did an incredible job and has left it in great standing. Linda had the opportunity to overlap with her for about a week and a half, and she learned a lot. Granted, she hasn't mastered that, she's going to be the first one to admit it. But Jean set her up in the right direction, which has been just a huge advantage to any new person coming in. So we're in good hands, and so far Linda's off to a great start of asking the right questions and getting the basics understandings in line to take us to the next step. So just to review the Transpar report, which we did receive in early April, they went through a variety of different areas of our transportation system. Everything from a deeper technology review, meaning our GPS system that we do utilize on a daily basis. They even worked with NRT to understand our fleet of buses, their age, their mileage, all those sort of things that you would think would be important were reviewed. They did consider the traffic patterns at schools. And I know there's been a lot of, you know, consideration for that. I've been working with the principals, perhaps making some adjustments to make things safer and more efficient. They did take a peek at that for us. And then they did a real deep dive into our ridership and mapping. And that ridership is going to be something I talk a little bit more in detail about, about the options we have going forward, because that is a critical part of how our bus system works. And then the benefit that we had with the Transpar report is they are a national firm, and they could tell us a lot of different things about what's happening as national trends, which we had a couple of great conversations with them about. But also knowing that New England is unique. And between the roads that can wind between rock walls and all the other facets, especially in Northborough and Southborough, are considerations that they have had. So as they're doing some, you know, Google Earth reviews of our topography, they learn a lot from it and they can correlate it to other areas of the country, which I think is, was an interesting part of what we were able to receive from them. So this is a dense slide, but it's kind of an important slide. And what came from this work that they did is a real analysis of the times that our buses are on the roads and how our routes overlap. And what you can gain from this slide, when you look at the left to the right, is just that you'll see more stackings of the routes. What that means is that our buses and our way of transporting our students is extremely efficient. Typically, you would see less stacking and more gaps between routes, which would mean that there's downtime between a first tier and a second tier. Our tiers are right on top of us and, you know, the time is maximized. So that is something that actually came as commendation from the firm. They haven't seen, you know, a layering like this work as well as ours done. And that's what I want to give Jean, you know, credit for, having, making sure bus routes are ending in the right location and starting without delay. They're not traveling across town to start their routes. That's the efficiency that Jean was able to build. So that was, although this, you know, does demonstrate that things are tight, it does show that things do work in as efficient manner as possible with the resources that we have. And at the core of it, we did go from a three-tier system to a two-tier system, which is basically condensing our bus routing over a lesser amount of time. And that's the key takeaway from this. Come on.
Is this saying that there are 37 overlaps, which correlates to the second bullet? Where it says the overlaps mean that there is an indicator of strain performance?
Yes, that is correct.
And how can I tell which are the 37? Is that based on the color coding?
Color coding, yes.
Is there any way to tell, like, the most extreme of those strains? And is maybe the next slide, you're going to show an opportunity for improvement?
Yes, in a way. Some of it's hard because when they were taking these snapshots of data, you know, what was happening in November and December might be a little different than what's happening in February, March. So granted, it was from a section of time where it was really in its infancy. And, you know, the schools have reported that the timeliness of the buses have improved as the year has gone on. And that's not anecdotal because we're not collecting that on a daily basis like we once were. We're more attacking the problem areas that have existed. So I would say from that, Kamali, you know, we probably have in Southborough, I'd say two, three buses that are concerned, that we're really focusing on for our 22-23 plan to improve their efficiency.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do we know, is the ridership back up to like pre-COVID levels, basically the same?
Yes, that's part of our subject, yes, Jen, it is. We are seeing an uptick in participation, especially since when the masking mandate was removed. Also anecdotal. anecdotal, because we haven't dedicated any resources to that, to do actual collections. But we are getting that from the schools and from the bus company as well, that their buses are seeing a greater level of participation. But we haven't analyzed that deeply.
So the efficiency, though, should be the same or should be pretty similar, right?
Or it should be a little more strained, because it has more students.
Yeah.
But we're not seeing our buses performing worse.
Okay.
So with more students, we're seeing them continue to perform pretty well and consistently, and even better in some respects. So I think it's a good, you know, a good balancing act that we're at right now. And people are also getting accustomed to it, and there's something to be said for that. Once you've done something 150, my old day, 150 times, you get improved efficiency.
I was just going to add that many, many times you would see buses parked and lined up on Parkerville and other side roads. That was the gap time that people had. So you don't, you won't observe that anymore, because we've condensed the time. We really tried to maximize the time that they're on the road picking up kids and dropping kids off.
That's correct. I know it's a dense slide. Any more questions about this, or would you like me to go on?
There's a slide of recommendations.
Yes.
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay. We'll get there pretty quick. Boom. So from the Transpar report, these are the things that came from it. And there was a level of consistency between what we were, what was being recommended in Northborough and Southborough. One of the key spots they saw is that in a neighborhood, especially a neighborhood that had sidewalks, we had more stops than are necessary. So that was something that we absolutely knew. A lot of it was legacy stops, because that has been where the bus stop has been for years. And that's not something that we wanted to put too much strain on as we were making this transition. But we do see opportunities for improvement if we do look, when it is safe to do so, to reduce the number of bus stops, because that's automatically going to gain us some efficiency. The other key, and this is a national trend, and we are working collaboratively with NRT, is the number of bus drivers that are available to us. We are daily dealing with the bus driver shortage in one way or another. And that is not something that is exclusive to our district. Our extracurricular programs have really been strained, and that goes from the high school all the way down to the elementary school to get buses for field trips. Principal Herschek lucked out today. They delivered on time, although it was 45 minutes later than it needed to be, because they couldn't get a bus back there to bring the, and this was just from Worcester. So Principal Herschek got lucky today, but still there was a lack of efficiency in some of that. And that's an extracurricular activity that we're hoping in the fall. So one of the pieces of that, as we're working with NRT, is through their recruiting efforts and some assessments that will be happening over the summer, they're predicting a less of an impact on our overall system for the fall of '22. And I said, I'm going to have to hold them to that, because if there's been one complaint that's been consistent, that has been it. So we're hoping to get that right up.
If I could interject a question related to that. So have you noticed, I realize that, you know, the fall will be a different story, but have the challenges related to bus driver availability increased, decreased, or really just kind of hanging in there?
It's gotten better with like little, you know, like we might have a week that was tougher than the week before. So overall, I would say that NRT and our drivers have been incredibly committed, you know, whether they are also dealing with some COVID spikes at times throughout the year. I know they did in January. We saw, we struggled a little bit there. More recently, we've been pretty good. I think we had a coverage scenario last week in Southborough that was difficult to manage, but NRT did it on their own. And it didn't, it maybe delayed one bus by five minutes. Considering what other school districts are telling us, we've done very well in that regard.
I would just echo our bus drivers, the quad red bus drivers are committed to Northborough and Southborough and have done an amazing job. And where we've been challenged is just subs when they're out sick. There are no subs to take those routes. And therefore, I'm sure each of you has experienced the shuffle of busing that happens as a result. But we are very fortunate, having talked to our counterparts in neighboring districts. They have not been as fortunate and have faced with far more challenges than I would say that we have experienced this year.
But overall, Roger, the frequency of those calls at six o'clock in the morning saying we're down drivers has gone down exponentially since, you know, October and November. To a point of being every so often. Of course, it's on the worst day possible, but still, you know, we figure it out.
The best you could do is say the example was one bus was five minutes late. That's almost.
I did not. And so that's a great example of a place where I thought we were going to be in trouble and needing to send out an all-call communication of sorts. But after we analyzed it and a lot of time was put in, we discovered it was only going to be a five-minute delay, so we held off, because we didn't want to create a greater disruption.
I have a question. If you could find, then would you consider like the permis sub model, like that you're doing with substitute teachers?
Absolutely. That's what existed prior, is they would have a pool of staff that would report to their dispatch, you know, in the morning, and where they were needed between the different accounts, they would, they would go. Or they would provide assistance in the office to help manage the day's routes. So that no longer exists. The people that are assigned to the dispatch station are actually driving buses, and they're on a skeleton crew in order to get those, you know, CDL licensed drivers behind the wheel. So that's the strain that they're seeing, and that's daily.
So that will come back to the vendor, basically?
We're hoping. We're hoping. And that was part of their, you know, as much as we could promise anything, that is their intention for the fall of '22, because they have things scheduled over the next three months to prepare for that. So we're hopeful. The other thing that came from the Transpar report, and this is a very interesting idea, is to do a deeper investigation into our GPS system and their alignment. We did express frustration over, you know, when we're trying to track a bus, it's not necessarily popping up on the screen. And it's because it's not programmed properly. So they had problems with their fleet, where they had a number of vehicles down, and then those vehicles that were subbed in weren't programmed properly. So what are their internal mechanisms to make sure that the devices are updated, routed accordingly? So when we're looking at our screen, we see all 32 buses from the district, whereas there were times where I would see one way up in, you know, Tewksbury. That's not providing us any service, but that's our bus that is literally up in Tewksbury. So, you know, things like that are areas where I know NRT is working hard to repair and looking forward to improvement in that area as well. So planning ahead and moving forward, one of the, I think the best moves that we did make is the adjustments to the Algonquin and Triadaer PM routes to maximize efficiency and reduce the wait time at the nearest school. This was something that was in place this year, and we're only going to make it better. We are not anticipating any changes to the existing start and end times at school, because we have been able to make the efficiencies we wanted to see possible. So a lot of that credit is owed to the nearest staff. Mr. Finneran, please express this. They did adjust their way of doing end-of-day dismissal to accommodate, and it's working, it's working pretty well. Also, like we mentioned earlier, you know, maximizing those routes where it's safe to do so, reducing the number of stops are things that we're actually working on right now. And then thinking about like, you know, Jen's question about increased ridership, what type of impact is that going to have on us as we come out of the pandemic and into an endemic? Those are things that we're going to be monitoring certainly very closely at the beginning of the school year, but we're not anticipating any great changes. It's going to be rather, rather consistent. So overall, those are the things that we're anticipating for Southborough next year. I will say that we are inheriting the same way of operating for Algonquin and Melican in Northborough. So our counterpart, we're going to use the same system for the PM routes there that was effective here in Southborough. So we learned something. Southborough was the guinea pig, and Northborough is now going to be implementing the same system. So I'm feeling pretty good about that. So next steps, certainly working with NRT, we're going to continue to do so and really track their contractual obligations. That is something as part of an ongoing process that we have. Reviewing even deeper the Transpar data that we did receive, that's been ongoing since we received the report in early April. Building of the routes, all of them have been drafted and are being reviewed by NRT as we speak. And the drivers, their input on these are very critical as we move forward, and they're actually going to be giving us advice on neighborhoods that do have maybe a few too many stops. And they know the families well enough so that they might be able to make some recommendations. If that does occur, we will be communicating directly with those families about that change and to the neighborhood in general. One idea that came to us from actually a couple of different sources, including Transpar, was to have neighborhoods, you know, talk amongst themselves about what would be the best configuration. And one thing that actually my, my neighborhood considered is rotating the stop during the winter months. So in October, in November, it'll be at one house, in December it will be at another, in January. We have the flexibility in the staff to be able to do something like that. I don't want to see that happen all over the place, but when we do have neighborhoods that can work that out and there is agreement, we'll work with families to make that happen. And we did see that this year. We had a couple of families call us and say, you know what, the bus stop doesn't need to be at our driveway. It can be, you know, a stop or two down. And that helped three families make it better for them. So that's where we really have benefited from everyone's input. So then the other thing to expect is the communication going forward. We are going to continue with where is my kid? Still can't stand the name of that. We are, we don't have a ton of data on its daily usage, which I'm frustrated about, and I'm asking for a deeper investigation on extracting some of that. But we are going to continue with it. We've heard good things overall, not that there hasn't been bumps in the road, and we're hoping to improve that for next year. And the biggest thing is we launched this last summer, but we'll continue with personalized communication for what a student's actual bus stop, bus number and bus stop will be, and people can anticipate that email being sent to them in July of '22. That's what I have. Come on.
For the words, for the app?
Yes.
Is it fiscal-y sounds? Is it, or, you know, if they're not giving you some of the things that we need, do you feel like we need to investigate elsewhere?
They've done a pretty good job. They actually purchased this app. They actually own it, which allows them to, we are the ones, we were the first district.
To remember that.
And that used it. So our feedback.
That's not a bad thing.
No. I didn't love that part nor the name of it, but still, it has provided some reassurance and some peace of mind for some.
Okay, yeah, that reminded me. So it's not something that we have been control over?
No, we do not. I mean, if we, we weren't happy with the first one, that's why they've gone to the second.
Okay, we have influence.
We do.
Okay.
Especially because we're the guinea pig.
So that 900 users was our families?
District-wide. They couldn't disaggregate it by town.
Right.
But so totally, between the 4,000 students that we have in the district, you know, 900 accounts were active.
So I think you answered this, but at one point, there was discussion about maybe adjusting the start and end times of school to accommodate whatever was happening with the buses. But it sounds like that won't be necessary?
It's not necessary. It's evened out better than expected. And I think that's one of the things that's come from the five months of experience. And we're not anticipating radical changes to the routes. We're anticipating more efficiencies built in. So it's almost like, you know, this year would have been the worst case scenario, and it's only going to get better. So with that, our start times are within the window that we're happy with.
I have a question. This is always a question that comes up when stop conversations start. And since you're talking about maybe shifting, is there any like hard rule for the kindergarten kids? Do they always, are they sort of like put into a stop too? There's always this like banter that like all kindergarteners get picked up.
It's not, it's not a requirement, but we do make every accommodation we possibly can for all families that we need. And in fact, that was one of the families that said it doesn't need to be at my driveway. It can be at the neighboring driveway to make it easier for everyone. So that's the way we've done it so far.
Okay, so you set up, set it up that way, and then it can be shifted. Okay, that one's good.
So if I could just make a couple remarks. And I think it's hard to believe that we implemented this change just this past September. And very rarely do we make such a change where we impact all 10 schools, all three districts, pretty much every student. So it was a significant change. I just want to, I don't want to minimize that. I just want to thank Keith and the team for, and the principals and the teachers for, and parents for being flexible and accommodating as we navigated this change. And then last, I think what goes unsaid often is the great value that we are getting for our transportation because of the partnership with the region, partnership with Northborough, and the way the contract's written. So we are, we are getting an extreme deal value for transporting our students. And that's not often part of the story we tell with the budget process, but important to remind people. I think Transpar, they did an analysis of the average cost of an industry of a bus and what the actual value we're getting. So it is significant. And then lastly, I think through the contract, the contract with NRT, you know, I'll commend Becky for writing the contract, and there's not a fuel escalator for increased fuel costs. So.
It's a contract.
You know, so as we are seeing greater use of costs, and now what we're asking them to do is be more efficient with our routes, they have a financial incentive to be more efficient. We look for taking up an hour route and making it 35 minutes and still providing good service. So I think we have some things going for us.
Can you speak to the process of getting that volume? Is it really, is it negotiation, or is it just the buying power or everything together?
It's maximizing the region, the transportation reinforcement at the regional level, and then using our buses efficiently and then just economy scale.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Keith.
You're welcome.
All right. So we're going to move from transportation to food services.
Food services.
So just a general comment before I turn it over to Keith. So this year, with rising inflation costs, we have seen, we've been impacted by the food costs and the price increases. Much like our extended day program, the food service program is self-funded, so it does not come from an operational budget. It's a revolving account, and it's supposed to be, again, self-funding through charging meal prices. So Keith and Becky and the financial team have done some analyses around what does food costs look like for next year? What does that mean for the bottom line? And what do we need to do to make sure that we'll be in the black at the end of fiscal year '23 in terms of food services? So Keith, I'll go over to you and Becky.
Yeah, this is, this is going to be no surprise. I think everyone has experienced it in their worlds of, you know, going to the supermarket. Obviously, food prices have increased. Our ability to transport and get deliveries continues to be strained. I did share that with the committee earlier in the year. Although it's kind of evened out slightly, it's still, you know, something that we're contending with. That's why you're not seeing the variety that we'd like to see on our menu and things of that effect. The other thing that we're, we want to make sure that we're retaining our quality employees, and that's something that is factored into the overall system. So what we can say is that this year, participation in school lunch has never been greater. Our numbers are up between 15 and 20% per building. And the key to that is realizing that all of these meals are free. One of the factors we have to consider is that the universal free lunch that we've benefited from throughout the pandemic is going to be discontinued on June 30th of 2020. So what we're, 2022, that was two years ago. I don't want to go back there. 2022. So what we need to prepare for is what September 1st is going to look like. So I'll talk about it on a logistical end. On a logistical end, we've got to get our community back into the process of, you know, populating their my-school bucks accounts, making sure they have positive balances, making sure that we are taking care of our families in need that do need a free or reduced lunch. Those are all things that we haven't had the volume of for two years, and we're getting back into those, you know, preparations for the upcoming school year. So what we're trying to make good predictions on is if we did come back to a pay-for-meal, what can we anticipate? And then also, what can we anticipate as far as the food costs and delivery charges and all the, you know, Greg mentioned the fuel charge? That's not, you know, That's not, you know, our buses are good, but for the food services, we're getting a letter every, what, two, three weeks saying that a vendor has to raise their prices. So we're trying to make good predictions on what that would be, and, you know, also in the same breath, although our participation has been up this year, are we going to see that go back down to more normal numbers? And then what does that mean? And what did that bottom line mean? Because like Greg mentioned, our food services program needs to be self-sufficient. It is not subsidized by the operational budget. It can be subsidized by some grants at times, but that are not going to make huge, huge differences when it gets to it. So Becky, do you want to share a little bit about the other analysis that we've done?
Yeah, I mean, just to put this in context, prior to the pandemic, children were paying $3 per meal. Right now, we're receiving $4.62 for each meal from the federal government, and that's really, you know, helped us to stay in the black this year, but like Keith said, we are seeing a lot of price increases. And so what we've really been looking at is trying to come up with some assumptions for next year, looking at potential, like Keith mentioned, the decrease in participation, looking at our costs for this year, and coming up with some projections, and so that we can come forward with what our, what our suggestion would be for a meal for next year.
So actually, you said populate the school bus account, but you meant the food cafeteria account, I think. And I only mentioned this to let you know I was listening.
You did that on purpose.
I know that. Do you, I know it's really hard to predict, and that's, and I'm sure you're going through even worse angst about that than than my comment would suggest, okay? Do you think, so I'm suspecting you think it's likely that there will be a decrease when when meals are no longer free. Is that a fair assumption?
I do. That is a fair assumption.
Do you also think that because, well, do you also think it's likely that there will be an increase in cost, I think based on what you're seeing so far also?
It will certainly not get any lower overall.
But you're not certain that the cost will increase at this point?
I do not.
Okay, because that eliminates my next question, which would have been, if you'd said yes, then I was going to ask if you thought that the, an increase would actually drive participation even lower than if it came back at the same rate? But that's not, actually, that's not a relevant question then, because we don't really know.
I can just mention that one, too, because we've had these conversations where families are seeing it at home as well. So are they going to be more likely to purchase the school lunch? Because we do have some economies of scales that maybe they don't have at home. So that's why it's, it's, it's a flip of a coin. You don't know.
Well, that's even the reverse, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're saying that as food price increase at home, and at home, if lunch comes in close to the same, it's, that's very.
And that there, right there is a big question. And the other thing that we're seeing a slight improvement on, and I, I don't have a crystal ball with it, is our access to commodities. So when we have access to commodities, we're really seeing that economy of scale tip in our favor, because we are able to get those cases of ground beef or whatever the case may be, whatever the economy, whatever the commodity is, we're doing a lot better than you and I at Stop &amp; Shop. You know, and so what, but, but those commodities have not been available consistently or regularly over the course of this year. So to predict that, yeah, it's going to be better, or what it was pre-pandemic, would not be, you know, a smart assumption to make. Although I can say the trend is good, because I have, I've seen more requests to order commodities in the last couple of months than I did over the last year. So that's a good sign. It's also maybe perhaps vendors at the end of the school year trying to offload what they have. There's a variety of different things that might be impacting that, but we have had those requests come in, and therefore, we are packing our freezers and doing store rooms and doing things we can do in preparation for fall.
And I'll just add, the projections that the financial team used for pre-pandemic participation.
Correct.
So we, we try to use prior year's data to really project what normal participation would look like, and something that I think our hope is that the federal government potentially, which I don't, I think is very unlikely, will continue free, universal free meals. But there's also some legislation at the state level for universal free schools. We've advocated on the path of the district and the committee, so we've sent letters and we're advocating. We're hoping that we don't have to look at increasing the cost of lunches for our families, because it is a difficult time for many families, and we're hoping that the state will pick up universal free meals for one year. I also want to say that your question around, are we recommending a price increase? We're not, we are laying the groundwork for a potential increase. $3 per meal was extremely low. The last time meals were raised, or the price of meals were raised, I think, was in 2017.
Seventeen, seventeen?
And before that, I think it was 10 years since we had raised the cost of prices. Although now's not the time to raise the cost of food and a service to our community. At the same time, we have a fiscal responsibility to make sure that we're on the black at the end of the year, because that's our, that's our responsibility.
As we kind of start to evaluate those, you know, how much to possibly increase by, I think just know that, like, if, once you get to a certain percentage, and you're still getting the same product, like, I think the families will feel that, you know, a lot, you know, just, it would, it may not be as positive of a response to know that I've gone up X percent, but the output is still the same. So there's kind of like a fine line between, okay, the amount that we have to increase just based on what's happening in our world versus, you know, if I'm going to pay that much, I at least need to have a better output, so just think about that.
Do you really think that's necessarily the case? Because they're seeing prices increase elsewhere and the output is the same, even though it's costing them more. So you think that they'll look at this differently than than the rest of their world?
Interesting. So $3.25 versus $4.25.
Right.
I think, you know, I think there is a tipping.
Oh, yeah.
People are starting.
Yeah.
But I think that the goal of this conversation this evening was not to surprise anyone, to let the financial department and Keith continue to do the analysis, the legislation move forward, and let us prepare for potential scenarios based on if universal free meals is not an option next year for us.
Way down at the end there.
I'm the bleacher still. So two things. One is, I was going to make the comment that didn't we just raise prices? I feel like that was yesterday, even though it was 2017.
I agree with you.
Okay, so, so that was a little while ago. Do we know when we'll find out if the state is going to supplement?
I'm not sure. I think there's a lot of legislative action around this particular bill, and, you know, as you can imagine, you know, Southborough is a fairly economic, you know, economically advantaged community. Some of these communities are not so fortunate, and this is, you know, any increase is a significant impact.
To let you know how long ago this was, I think there's only two of us on the committee that were actually here when that was done.
That's so funny. I could have sworn it was within the last year or two, but.
And I'm going to get the woodwork students back.
Yeah. And I just want to make the comment that I, I think, I disagree a little bit. If the price goes up, I don't know that everybody will expect revolutionary, you know, change in what's on the menu. Because I, it's just everywhere right now, inflation, and I think that this is a pretty direct case for it just costs more, and we have to charge more, and we're not making a profit. It's not like this is a, you know, business, and we're trying to, you know, milk the inflation or something. It's just, it is what it is. So I'm just making that comment, because I, from my standpoint, I don't feel like we need to put a lot of, you know, additional pressure on trying to do. I do think that's a worthwhile conversation, and I know we've had that conversation kind of off and on over the last few years, but I think that if we have to cover the cost, we have to cover the cost.
Do we have any data in 2017 about, like, what happened?
Yeah, we have, I mean, as far as participation?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a question.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Yeah, we do.
The other thing that is happening, too, it's not just with the pandemic, we had to, I know the food services department had to package things, new costs of packaging. So we are now back to using.
Trays.
Trays and washing, so it's actually better for them. And we don't have to package things like we have.
That's right.
But the new, the last thing I know you said is, Keith, our, our food service staff are outstanding, and, you know, they, they care about the kids, they care about the product they put in front of kids and work really hard. You know, we talked about transportation, food services, nursing, all of these people have such an impact on the students' experience in our schools that, which we, we need to make.
I'm wondering, do we see any benefit during the year of free lunch outside of just participation? Like, are there any?
Well, anecdotally, and also from what I'm hearing from other local districts, is that the advantage of a universal free lunch program is it's breaking down a huge boundary that we have discussed. I know I did hear when I was at Trotter, when we went from, what's your name again? Oh, you get free lunch because you're on a list, down to just putting in your key code, and that was the only identifier of it, made things better. Going to universal free lunch, got rid of that. And so we're hearing that across the board. I am hearing from school nurses that they're seeing students eating more and therefore are not coming down with a greater level of frequency with belly aches and things like that. Now, I can't say that now with what we're dealing with, you know, with the pandemic, but that's what I was hearing when we were in that good little swell and that pure, pure anecdote. And also from the cafeteria staff themselves, hearing about the kids' excitement. You know, before, you know, before it was free, you know, they just, they got in a routine of always bringing. This broke that routine, and therefore, participation, what else? So I think there's going to be a level of carryover of that, now that they do like whatever that meal option was. Granted, it wasn't a lobster bisque, but still, it, it, it was something that they enjoyed. They might continue when they see that on the menu going forward, just because they had exposure.
Or they're less.
So that's just, that's purely anecdotal and from conversations with the staff.
Pizza Dipper's. Pizza Dipper's.
What?
Give us an update on the Pizza Dipper's?
They're not available. Pretzels weren't available.
Be to the camera.
Not available. You know, even something as simple as a baked pretzel. We had trouble providing with the demand that we were having for those, and that was a very basic product that we wouldn't have an issue with. We're just not seeing the, the variety of product that we once were able to have access to.
And the cafeteria staff would be expecting a delivery with X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
They wouldn't get X, Y, and Z, and have to, you know, change the menu on the fly and make the best possible of those deliveries.
Would they get A, B, C? Like, just, they would still get stuff, but it was just different, or just nothing would show up?
Or both. And that was very, that, that created a high level of stress for the staff, because when you, when you're expect, okay, so let's say if we're menuing Pizza Dipper's tomorrow, you ordered it, you were expecting today's delivery, and they say, oh, no, it's going to show up tomorrow morning. Okay, great, and then you come in and it's not there? Can't tell you how much time it's happened.
You try to face 200 second and third graders.
Imagine he was saying no.
And that's just been an ongoing challenge, you know, especially this year with the rise in participation, is that, are we meeting that demand of menu variety and product? Product has been the biggest obstacle.
Good. All right, good stuff.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We're into old business, and this is the agenda item for school choice vote. Is there, I mean, does, I was going to have a superintendent give a brief summary. We've talked about this for meetings. Do you have any specific things you want to hear about? So it can be pretty brief.
Yeah, so my recommendation is to withdraw from school choice. Again, it's presumed that districts will participate if there's not a public hearing and a formal vote from the school committee to withdraw, and for the reasons we've discussed, the per pupil cost in Southborough to educate a child versus the amount we get reimbursed. And I also think about coming out of the pandemic, making sure our class sizes are as low as possible, so I don't think at this time it's wise to be opening school choice to any outside district students.
In all, in the last, well, I guess just the last two years, I don't know if Katura you saw anything for that, but I've only received one email from a citizen in another town that was asking about, you know, participating in Southborough, so it only happens almost never. But, okay, other questions? So I think this needs to be, does it, does there need to be specific language around this vote? Is this as far as, have it here?
So just a motion for the Southborough Public Schools to withdraw from school choice for 22?
So I would entertain a motion for the Southborough Schools to withdraw from participating in school choice for the school year 22.
Twenty.
2022, 2023. Is there some moved?
Some moved.
Moved by Kamali. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kim. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that motion? That's unanimous. Now, by popular demand, we're into master plan update.
What you've all been waiting for.
Every meeting I come, hoping.
So, as you all know, master plan has been in the works for some time now. The previous master plans, after our master plan, did not include a school's component, but this time around, because the schools really, you know, occupy so much of the town's budget, it was decided to include a section on the schools. It's a little bit different from some of the other sections, because the schools don't operate according to the town's master plan. So basically, what's happened is the strategic plan, the school strategic plan, and there's a list of, I should have circulated it before this meeting, but you might remember, there's a list of other goals that were unrelated to the strategic plan that were developed for inclusion and that do have more to do with relating to other areas of the town and entities within the town. And so we reviewed that some time back. So the strategic plan, that list, and then, since then, there's been a sort of a brief narrative, very similar to the description of the schools in the old master plan, even though there was a little description, just describing the operations of the schools, and a chart developed as to who's responsible for the goals in the master plan in the school section, which basically is the school committee. So that is, I'll circulate the link after this, so everybody can look at it, but it was sort of, the final draft was unveiled at the town meeting last week for comment. So I'll circulate it, and if there's comment or questions, you can, I guess, send them to Roger, who can give them to me. The meetings tend to be on the exact same nights as the school committee meetings, so, but I can always, you know, pass along the feedback somehow and get it back. So pretty straightforward. If anyone has any questions at this point.
So I just have two comments. And thanks to Katura for taking this on. I was the liaison for, I guess, early on, and then Katura graciously agreed to take that on. And, but also, there's someone that's not here, and that I'd just like to publicly at least acknowledge for the, for the recording, Selectman Stivers really, really worked hard, at least when I was there, and probably also Katura, you and me say the same thing.
I meant to say that Sam, he actually drafted the narrative, so he did a great job.
He, he was kind of our surrogate, okay, proponent as far as schools getting a place in that master plan, and, you know, so for those people that see this recording, we have a lot to thank Selectman Stivers for as far as the schools are concerned.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both.
We are now into the superintendent's report.
So in your packet is the enrollment report as of May 5th of 2022. And no significant variation from last month's projections. And our class size ratios FY '23 are looking very healthy. Excellent. And also in your packet is the FY '22 monthly general fund expenditure report and grants update. I'm going to turn it over to Becky.
So it's really hard to believe that there's less than two months remaining for school year 2022. It feels like we just wrapped on having that budget approved. So as of April 30th of 2022, we had a balance of $167,324 or 0.77% remaining. At the same time last year, we had $373,946 remaining or 1.76%. As of this past Friday, all of the schools and the departments were supposed to submit their final purchase orders for fiscal year 2022 as the finance team prepares to close out this fiscal year. We are ready to close it and at this point in time, we, I do not have any, anything to report on the South Grove budget and concerns.
Question, any? These are small percentages. Last year was probably twice as much as this year left over, even though they're small numbers. So any particular reason that you attribute that to or nothing you can point to?
I feel like this year we've done a great job in terms of encumbering all of our funds for the fiscal year. We really, as a team, have sat down and created a list so that way each year we're making sure that we're anticipating our needs. I will also say, I think last year we did see an influx with some of the grants that came through that were very unofficial to us in terms of giving some of the pressure on our operational budget. And while we do have the ESSR, we have that for an extended period of time. So it has not been quite the same influx as I saw last year.
Can I just add too, we benchmark against prior fiscal years as well, from month to month. So when we look at pre-pandemic, benchmark against where we were at this time in a typical year, we are exactly where we typically are in terms of the base.
Other questions?
For the enrollment report, it doesn't have pre-K on there. What was it?
Pre-K is, I believe it's on the bottom. It's the last three rows. And it's pre-K column, we should see the pre-K column. And we're projecting 48 pre-K students.
Okay. Oh. Down there?
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so would you want to take a vote before I go to grants or?
Well, I don't think the grants, because we know that's separate, okay? So now I'm in the mood to make sure that.
Okay.
Okay, no questions on the budget to date, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the South Grove Public School District FY 2022 budget, monthly general fund expenditure, expenditure report as of April 30th, 2022 until August. Is there some moved?
Some moved.
Katura made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kamali. Questions? There are none. All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, grants.
Thank you. So in terms of the grant expenditures, we continue to work with the programs that have been identified in both ESSR and ESSR three grants. As you can see, in ESSR two, we have completed our work with the mass insight and have fully expended those funds. So of the $135,000 received through ESSR funds, we have expended or encumbered $96,619 and have $38,000 remaining. We do have until September 30th of 2023 to expend those funds in total. As far as ESSR three, some of our expenditures include professional development stipends, executive function, executive functioning, professional development offerings, and then additional tutoring materials and early literacy screeners and decodable tax purchases. Of the 281,464 received, we have expended or encumbered $21,557 of those funds. We have until September 30th of 2024 to fully expend ESSR three.
Questions?
Sure. Katura?
Just, this is a relatively small thing, but for the tutoring program that's referenced both under ESSR two and ESSR three, is that the program at Trotter?
So the tutoring program is at Trotter, Nearie, and Woodford, although we have had different, we've had a different approach to the tutoring at each of the schools.
Okay. And so why would we take, so there's some that expended, but it seems like it's coming out of ESSR three instead of ESSR two. Is there a reason for that or?
So, yeah, so if you look at ESSR two, the, the second column is our amended budget. And we decided to focus ESSR three to, for tutoring because we do have that requirement in ESSR two to utilize 20% of our funds to address learning loss and loss of time learning. So we thought it would be more appropriate to utilize those funds for that program.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Kamali, did you have something else?
No.
So you can, we can almost strike the first column because it's the amended.
The first column was our original submission and then, yes, yes, I just showed it for illustrative purposes.
Understood, understood. Other questions? Thank you. And we're now into the building committee update course.
Sure. So I think it was great for the citizens of South Grove to approve the feasibility study for the Nearie Building Committee. So I just want to thank the community for support. The next step in the process is really for MSBA to launch its program, which actually for the town of South Grove begins August 1st. So we're in a bit of a holding pattern. We did speak with MSBA this week and they will be sending us information in July, June, and July in preparation for our August 1st, our start date. But we are in a great position in terms of moving forward with MSBA and are actually ahead of the process because, again, we do have the feasibility study afoot to move forward.
Katura, did you have anything to add related to this?
No, I, I echo the thanks to town meeting and the citizens. It was, it was a really great process. I thought that all, you know, there were some questions and they were very productive questions and I think this is a good thing.
And I'd also like to add that, I mean, there was certainly debate, it was good debate. And, you know, I'd like to do a shout out to Jason Alonoski as far as, but his presentation was excellent. I thought the way he fielded the questions was also very effective. And I know there was work done behind the scenes to put the presentation together. But I think the committee owes Jason some thanks because he did a great job. For the record. Educational policy?
So in your packet, there are policies for distribution.
Okay, policy development. Educational policy, we don't have any, right?
Yes, I got that. And then also in your packet is the distribution of the personnel report. And just to note, on personnel, we will be inviting retirees to the June school committee meeting so we can acknowledge and thank those retirees for their service to the district and students.
Questions?
Just to the policy, the comments on the policy committee. I think, I just, I think it's just great that we're doing this work, to see the updates happening after so many years. Some of them, they're more than five years old, you know, eight, eight years old and such. So I think that's just great progress and I think we owe it to the community to keep reviewing these things on a more frequent basis. So I wasn't on the committee this year, but I've been to some of the discussions previously and was on the committee previously. And I just want to say thank you for all that you're doing to revise that. So that's all.
Yeah, and I think that the trend, where possible, but it's not always possible because we have the three districts. Not all policies are universally applicable to all three districts, but many, many times they are. And where historically we've had, you know, multiple policies that say the same thing. It's, it's good to see that there's, that the work has been done to, to coordinate that. Sometimes end up with, you know, just fewer, fewer policies, okay?
I think it's super helpful to have the joint need of the subcommittees because then you can have conversations.
For sure. Okay. Communications?
So just a couple of updates on communications. A week ago, this past Monday, we met with Haran, communications, central office team. We spent three hours with Chris Haran, who walked us through some information and updates around communication and branding and how we can think about our communication as a district. It was very helpful. And it really is going to be kind of a catalyst for a launch point to think about how we communicate effectively to our parents, to the larger community. And what is really the brand for all of the public schools of South Grove, public schools of North Grove and North Grove, South Grove Regional School District. I will be inviting Chris Haran to actually lead the school committee retreat in August. So he'll be doing a similar presentation. So we are trying to find a date, so I will communicate that date once it's set. But I'm excited about the partnership and it's been, it was very helpful thus far. In terms of the website refresh, so Julie Doyle and the technology team is working behind the scenes on refreshing our website. So that work will be underway for the next several months. And we hope to have a launch date for August 1st for the upcoming school year. And again, the goal is to make sure that we're sharing the great work that is happening in our district and that people can actually find the website. So those are the two points. And then lastly, just mass communication tool update. So Julie Doyle and I and some other central office folks have been looking at communication tools. We use OneCall now for our, most of our communications. And we're looking for a tool that better translates seamlessly for our families, have better analytics so we can analyze the communications we're sending out. And then just allow us to provide better customer service to our families so that they have some control of how they're receiving messages and communications, whether it's text, the frequency and so forth. So we have narrowed it down to one tool, which is ParentSquare. And we are in the process, we are in the process of adding the tool and getting feedback from different focus groups and really making sure that it is the tool that we want to move forward with because this is a significant change. But we are, at all accounts, very promising and exciting. And I will share more information with you later.
Good.
I guess we've got action on minutes next. So we have one set of minutes, the minutes of the open meeting, April 13th, 2022. I guess I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the open meeting, the South Grove School Committee, on April 13th, 2022. Is there some moved?
Some moved.
We've got it. Kamali, moved and second by?
A second.
Jen? Any changes? Are we good the way it's written? Sounds like no changes.
Yeah.
Sounds like no changes. So all in favor? It's unanimous. Those payrolls, agenda items for next month.
So we have the food services presentation. What else? COVID update.
So for the benefit of Mr. Lit, we may have an agenda item to basically, I guess, approve an ex officio number to the MTC. Tim and I kind of talked about that offline. I also tried to reach the MTC chairman. I think, I might disagree with Tim on whether we're supposed to or not, but usually Tim's right when he and I disagree. So probably more likely than not that we'll basically nominate, I guess it's Ryan, it would be Ryan. Now, in the meantime, Ryan's been attending the MTC meetings anyway. And I think he's also, I think he's also gotten together with Jason Towne and they've talked about some collaboration. So we're rolling, even though we haven't had an official vote.
So we not only need an ex officio member?
I'm not going to.
So we, we have a seat on the, on the MTC and it was the technology director, who maybe Mariana sat in in that role and has been absent for a while since changes.
And we have two, we have two members.
We have to see that we voted on, right?
Yeah, well, and we, we end up, we may end up voting on this also. It may be, I am going to look at the bylaws and if, Tim, Tim, there's audience sharing coming up, so I'm going to ask him to be gentle with this. But.
We have the committees to talk about next time, like committee assignments or not?
I know that we created committees assignments for the following year, usually at the June meeting. Are there certain, I don't, are there certain committees that we really need to have in place before the September meeting?
Just the payroll warrants.
Unless we can see who has been, I think it's Katura and Roger who are doing it.
So we'll, and I think that people have the summer to think about that.
Okay.
Although certainly, I mean, I think that since we'll have to discuss it, we can put it on the agenda. And if anybody has any thoughts about something that they think needs to get into place immediately, we should do that. Otherwise, let us think about it.
Should we get an S U D P update?
Extend a day update? For the agenda.
Indeed. And revolving fund, part of the finance.
Retirees.
There is retirees.
Retirees also.
Will you be able, will you get a tweet in a minute? Will they begin the packet before you have?
Going once. Obviously during the month, you've got something you didn't remember. Please, audience sharing? Mr. Lit, now remember.
So I, I will have the MTC issue offline.
Okay, thank you.
But I did want to repeat something I said previously about your website refresh. And that is that it's important to address accessibility issues as you're doing the refresh. You know, it's an opportunity to, to fix some of the issues that currently exist and to not introduce new ones. You don't get to do this terribly often. So please, I would ask the people working on it, if they don't have the expertise, to consult with people who are expert. This is something that's really important. I will say, you know, personally, it's an area that I've been working in since almost, I think, since before there was an ADA. So if that explains why I care about it enough to bring it up two meetings in a row, that's it.
For the record, can you share your name and address, if necessary?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please identify yourself and your address. Sorry?
Tim Lit, Woodland Road.
Man, I can't comment on your comment, but it's audience sharing. But if I could comment, I would say it's a very good point as far as the web refreshes.
And if I can comment on his comment and your comment. One of the main reasons why we're refreshing the website is ADA compliance accessibility.
And it's the same, and a platform, the platform should be able to help with that, right?
It's more than ADA. There are at least half a dozen standards related to website accessibility.
So. So I guess I can, I can, this is it, so whole audience share. One of the things that, I think Kamali and I have talked about, and she's actually put in more, more timeliness than I have, is related to, you know, related to accessibility of the meetings, especially for hearing impaired. And the issue is, can we close caption? And it turns out that, that the meetings that are broadcast in, through YouTube is a pretty simple option. I've actually experimented with it. Use down the right, or you can actually turn it on. It's not, not automatically available for every YouTube broadcast, but I think for ours, I think it is.
Is it available?
Have you tried to do the same thing?
Yes.
So for those that are interested in that, I didn't, I didn't even know actually, but it works, it works pretty well. There's other issues as far as, you know, making meetings available to folks with disabilities, but that's at least a big one, I think.
Also, Kamali, did you, like when it's on a cable access, do the closed captions?
I did not do that. I did not do that trial.
Just stuck that, yeah.
I did not do that, do that trial. But what I tried to look into were whether there were options for us that vendors provide and if that was necessary. But once I found that this alternative was available and we made ourselves accessible to any of the community members that want to reach out to us in advance or afterwards, I think that this is a good first step, which is just to communicate that this is an opportunity. If we hear feedback from any of the community members that this is not usable for them or allowing them to get the information that they need, then we can reconsider then.
Would you free add that to the agenda?
I think that it would be something I've discussed with Roger, that as the administrative team rolls out the new website and communications plan, et cetera, this would be something that you highlight. Put the link to the school committee meetings and the recordings, asterisks. Please note, you can do A D's.
All right, well, we're at the audience sharing, so now we're out of audience sharing. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Moved by Kim to adjourn and just trying to find the time. And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Katura. Not a discussion, all in favor? Unanimous for adjourned at 9:24 PM.